Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the March 14th, 2022 Town Council Meeting. I now call this meeting to order and we will begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In attendance tonight, we have in studio Counselor Chines, Vice Chair Butt, Counselor Santos and Counselor Danahy and joining us remotely are Counselors McLean and Dombrowski. So as a reminder, we will be doing roll call votes tonight. Item number four, public engagement. Sherri, do we have anyone signed up for public engagement online?
Madam Chair, nobody has signed up for public engagement.
Okay, in studio, is there anyone? No, okay. We will move right on to item number five, approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes tonight, the February 28th, 2022 Town Council Executive Session Meeting Minutes.
So moved, second.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. A discussion on these. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Item number two, approval of the February 28th, 2022 Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes as presented.
So moved, second.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on these set of minutes? Hearing none, roll call vote. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we have seven zero votes on both of those. Do we have a representative from the Scholarship Foundation?
Yes, we have Kathy Scanlon is joining us and Stephanie Curran is joining us as well.
Give them a moment to come on.
Can you hear us Kathy and Stephanie?
I can hear you, yes.
Oh, good. Welcome, go right ahead and we're anxious to hear about your phoneathon.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Scanlon. I'm the Vice President of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield and on Saturday, March 19th, we'll hold our 42nd Annual Phoneathon. As Vice President, I serve as the Phoneathon Chairperson. Our organization was formed in 1960 and over the past 62 years, TSF of Wakefield has provided over 12,300 financial awards to Wakefield students to assist them in higher education. While the soaring cost of college education and the growing burden of student debt, the mission of TSF is now even more essential than ever. Last year, 279 full-time students, high school graduates, college students and graduate school students received awards from us. We expect to give out even more this year as the need continues to increase. An equally important role that we play is remembering and honoring many of our townspeople and local organizations. The stories behind each of these funds, including those of individuals who gave much to our town and those whose promise was not realized, are a key part of our success. To remember community members, both old and young, families, local groups and businesses in a positive and active way is a significant reason for our accomplishments since 1960 and our continued growth in aiding Wakefield students. The last few years, due to the pandemic, we have not been gathering to make phone calls. Instead, we will be mailing letters to our prior Phoneathon donors, making financial appeal to the Wakefield residents via inserts in the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department March Utility Bills and spreading the word about TSF on social media, both Facebook and Instagram. I would like to introduce Stephanie Curran, the President of the TSF Student Directors, who will talk a little bit more about our upcoming Phoneathon. Stephanie?
Thank you, Mrs. Scanlon. I'm Stephanie Curran and I'm the President of the Student Directors of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield. This Saturday on March 19th, we expect to have 26 TSF Student Directors on social media sharing the information about the 42nd Annual TSF Phoneathon. We will be letting Wakefield families know how to donate to this great cause that will help students and our families manage through the high cost of college. We will also be at the Civic Center stuffing letters that will be mailed out to our previous donors. We hope that everyone will respond favorably to our most important fundraiser of the entire year. On behalf of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, we would like the Town Council to endorse our 42nd Annual Phoneathon and we also ask that you could please designate the week of March 13th through March 19th as the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield Phoneathon Week in Wakefield. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. You're singing to the choir here, you've got two, at least two of us with two kids in college. Thank you so much, it's a sure sign of spring to have you here. So the request was Scholarship Foundation Week. Help me there Stephanie. What did you want to designate it?
The Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield Phoneathon Week.
Of Wakefield Phoneathon Week. Do I have a motion?
So moved, seconded.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Discussion? I think that's a good thing. When there's no discussion, that's a very good thing. So hearing none, we will take a council vote to designate March 13th through 19th, right? So you want it to end on the day of the actual, okay. March 13th through 19th as Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield Phoneathon Week.
Thank you.
Sure, let's do the vote. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, it is so named and we look forward to getting your calls and your letters and seeing you on social media and really encourage everybody in Wakefield to support this wonderful organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, tax increment financing. Step right up.
I think I'll start us off. We have a couple of people coming online and Victor's here for the technical aspects of it and I do believe that Erin and hopefully a representative from the company is going to be online too. But anyways, as a bit of background, I want to think about 10 years ago, we petitioned, the town petitioned the state to be a tax increment financing community. And basically what that means is that if businesses come into town and they improve the property for their business and they create jobs, the town can, in a town, a two-pronged process, via a vote of the Town Council and via a vote of Town Meeting, grant deferral on taxes. So if you spent a million dollars to upgrade your business and create jobs and bring business to our community, the town could say, you know, some of that extra money, real estate taxes that you would be paid can be forgiven or deferred, actually. Forgiven and then start up later on. So we had that in our, that arrow in our quiver and we looked to, you know, work with businesses and find them and then the state said, well, you know, this is such a good idea. We'll let the whole state do it. So those efforts were, you know, I guess wasted, but it's okay. We went and we had some fun. I think we had to go to-
Once again, Wakefield's leading.
Right, we will lead. We had to go to Lowell, I think. Lovely that time of year. So we went through that. So we've been working very closely with mass business development and we have some very, very close relationships over there. And Erin's been working really closely with them and trying to work to get businesses to Wakefield. And a company through mass business development, through Erin's efforts and through Victor's efforts, is leaving the Seaport area in Boston and was looking to go out in the suburbs. I think one thing that we've learned with this new way of working is the suburbs are much more attractive, I think, than it was years ago when businesses being spread around the state. So this company, I'm going to call them Nanoramic, was meeting with us and also meeting with representatives in another community in the 495 Belt, but because Erin and Victor are so good and our relations, I think, with mass business development, which has been incredible, we convinced them that Wakefield was a place to be for a lot of reasons. I think that mainly because of our approach and I say Victor and Erin on that mainly, but also because it was really near where their talent was, where their workers were. 93, 128, they loved the community, loved the lake, talked about getting involved in, you know, in our downtown and things like that and loved all those things. And what's really exciting about this company is that they are, I might call them an emerging technology, a green technology. They make, I guess, diodes for batteries and that's about as much as I know. Hopefully someone will know more. Julie probably knows a lot more. We're very excited to present that tonight. Victor will go over the particulars of the deal. I think it's great and I look at this as a marketing piece. We're going to be in Banks and Tradesman and Boston Business Journal and that whole corridor that we've talked about, that Audubon Road corridor, which is where this is, is really something we'd love to see research and development in businesses. And for a lot of people that say, hey, we're losing our commercial tax base. We're turning this into, it's turning into housing because it's more profitable. Hey, this is one time that it's not going to happen because of these efforts. So I think Victor can go through some of the technical aspects that came through and like I said, I think Erin's probably on, but I can't see.
Nanoramic, just an exciting little company, particularly when we heard from their founder. They make something, something that's very important along the lines of, we had made a joke earlier about flux capacitor, but I think that did come out of one of us, to the founder of the company. Basically, they're looking to invest approximately $200 million in a site on Audubon Road that is about 26,600 square feet. The nature of their investment is mostly tenant fit-up. And that's also being done in conjunction with the owner of the property. So they're paying X amount in a lease, but the owner is providing X amount towards the fit-up and they're kicking in additional money for that. A typical tenant fit-up does not necessarily increase building value. What they're doing is rearranging within the existing footprint. So it's kind of hard to put a dollar value on, gee, how much will this increase the building value? Because some of the items, for example, they changed the loading docks. Well, you're already assessed for the loading docks. Are new docks more, are they, you know, it's something that, it's there. But shopping in the pencil, it come up with an increment value of about $325,000. And we start everything with the base year, so the base building value is almost 6.5 million. And if those improvements were complete, it would be the 6.5 plus the 325. So the way the TIF works, these TIFs, again, designed to promote, you know, job retention and increasing, hopefully hiring within the community and also other state incentives for other targets that they meet. The base value of the building will increase along with any market changes that the assessor, me, I make. So if the commercial sector goes up 1% or 2%, that base will increase 1% or 2%. But for the five years, I'm not going to charge them the additional $325,000 for the improvements. Boils down to about $7,500 a year. But if you really want to dig down, the way values really work is that we see so much appreciation in the residential sector. Even if commercial values go up, the commercial tax rate goes down. So while we're talking right now of a possible total TIF value over five years of like 38,000, it's conceivable that will come in, the actual number will come in a lot less than that just because of those factors at play. Other than that, is there any questions about the mechanics of how a TIF works? Or it's pretty simple, the way we do it, so.
Not a question, but a comment. And Steve, it probably was about 10 years ago when we went to the state because I think this is something we've talked about since I've been on the council now for nine years. And Victor, I know you've tried to get some businesses in. We've had conversation with businesses, Steve as well. And to me, I hate to use the word no-brainer because when I've done that, like, you know, we don't get a parking garage. But this seems exactly what we were talking about. So to give this, the tax increment for what seems to be a small amount of money over five years, but to attract an up-and-coming company that other companies could follow if things go well, it just sounds like a great opportunity for Wakefield.
One of the concerns I did hear, you know, what kind of precedent would this establish?
Good precedent.
At, you know, it's 100%. Well, the only precedent in my mind that establishes is that we're willing to sit down and have a cup of coffee with you. We're willing to hear you out. We're willing to hear out the state partners and see conceivably what we can bring to the package to facilitate a jump from, in this case, from the South Boston waterfront to Wakefield.
Yeah, I just want to say, I agree. I think it's such a great opportunity and I think it is a great place to be and will open the door. So thank you Victor and Steve and Erin for all of your hard work on this. You know, not only having a company, but also, you know, one company comes, then we can get more, like you said, with a marketing opportunity. And I think it also presents an opportunity for our schools in terms of, you know, I remember when I was on school committee, we were talking about, you know, developing relationships with some of these tech companies that we have, they're pretty impressive and looking at partnerships with schools and... So I think it's a win-win. I think it's a no-brainer. I think that that's exactly what we want to do is expand our businesses, especially these big businesses. We are at a perfect location, so that's a great job, so thank you.
And I know that we have some questions online, but I wanted to give the representative from the company an opportunity just to say a few words.
Excellent. Hi, everyone. My name is Eli Cohen and I'm Executive Vice President of Corporate Development for Nanoramic. We've been in the Seaport for the past 13 years and are very excited to be the newest addition to the Wakefield community. We love Wakefield, we love the lake and particularly, we love that seagulls are no longer going to be banging on our windows. That is a huge perk. Yeah, we've been interrupted many of times, had a seagull inside the facility before and so that problem is of the past. So we recently signed a 10-year lease off Audubon Road and we hope to be there for much longer. As of now, we're about 85 employees and have plans to increase our workforce quite significantly. And our technology is pretty complex and I can only talk about it for about five minutes before I'm out over my skis. But we are a very hard hardware company and we specialize in advanced materials for energy storage. The company was founded out of MIT in 2009. We received funding from NASA, the DoD, DOE, et cetera, to develop new materials for energy storage specifically for harsh applications. So as of now, we're focusing on lithium-ion batteries and we developed a new way to make lithium-ion batteries for electric cars. That's actually one of the greenest methods to make batteries. We eliminate different toxic solvents and we significantly reduce the amount of energy required to make a battery. We're an IP licensing company. We have about 150 patents. We're working with nearly every automotive OEM outside of China. On our Board of Directors, we have a former CEO of Audi, former CEO of General Motors and quite a few others and we're poised to disrupt the lithium-ion battery industry. We're raising $100 million and we hope to scale in Wakefield, which we're very excited for. And yeah, I think that that's about it. So thank you very much for having us and we're excited to be embedded in the community.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't know who was first because we didn't have the full screen up. Counselor Dombrowski, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that presentation, Mr. Cohen. I think this is really economic development for the 21st century and we've talked about, you know, we focus a lot on our main streets, which is incredibly critical for our small businesses, but this is the other part of economic development from my perspective and that's trying to attract these next generation businesses to be able to establish roots here and then grow within our community. I know that, Victor, we have the maximum ship currently onto our commercial properties and from a tax perspective. And I think that this is a very small means of sending a strong message to our commercial properties and to the business community that Wakefield is open for business. The more robust economy we can have within town, it will end up offsetting a lot of, you know, the residential burden that I think we find now. It's a nice way of doing that. I think it's very small money to be able to have a potentially very significant impact. And I think we could leverage this opportunity to show other businesses, especially this Audubon Road area, where we've talked about the idea of taking that to be the next generation of future businesses. And I think we really have a unique opportunity here to make an impact with negligible, you know, negligible tax implications to the town and undoubted dividends that I would expect, you know, would be paid forward in the form of jobs, in the form of encouraging these employees to become patrons of our small local businesses, to be driving, you know, traffic down, you know, foot traffic and people down to, you know, lunch spots with, you know, Main Street, Greenwood, whatever the case might be. So I think, I fully support this and that. I think that this sets no more of a precedent than we are looking to make sure that we can be as robust an economy as we can at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McLean?
Mr. Cohen, you indicated you're moving up 85 employees. Is the entire workforce moving up?
There's quite a few of us that work remote. We're scattered across the United States, but I'd say probably 65 to 70 of them are all moving to Wakefield.
And how many employee capacity do you think you will have at the new facility?
Probably 130-plus.
And you intend to fill that?
We do, yeah. We're raising a large round this summer and hopefully with that, we'll be able to scale accordingly.
Right. My only, I'm assuming you're not moving here for the $38,000?
No, we're not, no, absolutely.
My only concern had been precedent of, was just curious to Erin or Steve or Victor, do we have a lot more of these in the works? The TIFs?
This is our first one and although I will tell you that Maria called me Friday afternoon, that she may have another one that she's been working with. So this is out of the gate, so we'll look to get more, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, my only concern is, you know, businesses have come to Wakefield because of our location. You know, drive to Marlboro, my son commutes to Biotech in Marlboro. Yeah, it's a heck of a commute. People want to be within the Beltway and, you know, I have this basic conservative leaning, if you will, that it really should be between the landlord, the commercial landlord and the business. But that being said, I think based on the presentation, I'm convinced, but as Victor has indicated to me, also these are case-by-case basis. So in this case, I will be voting in the affirmative.
Thank you. Counselor Chines?
Thank you and thank you Victor, Erin, for the presentation and Mr. Cohen as well for presenting. You know, I would say when this kind of first came up a couple of months ago, I expressed probably a somewhat healthy degree of skepticism to Steve and Victor about it. Only because I think when these opportunities come up, you know, we should do our due diligence and we should make sure that we're not, you know, putting money into a project or initiative or incentive that, you know, maybe confers a benefit to a business owner that wouldn't change their behavior. I think there are a number of reasons though why this makes sense and the first is that it is a relatively small pool of dollars and it's also a pool of dollars that we wouldn't be getting if they weren't here anyway. We're not actually reducing our tax collections on the property relative to what they would be today. We're talking about deferring some of the incremental tax revenue that would come and it is relatively small. I think Counselor McLean also made the point that, you know, we have to vote on each one of these that comes forward. And so the circumstances that we're voting on here may not make sense for the next one. It may be a larger pool of dollars. It may be a different percentage that we defer. I like the fact that we have the ability to tailor that incentive to the opportunity that's ahead of us. I mean, I do think that that is smart economic development and so I'm eager to support this and eager to see Nanoramic move to Wakefield.
Any additional discussion?
Maybe Erin, does Erin want to say a few words maybe?
Erin, I didn't even recognize you down there. Thank you so much. Yeah, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, thank you everyone for your time. We've had really great discussions with Nanoramic about them wanting to move here, why they want to move here and I've done a few TIFs in my days in Lowell and I think it's just a really great tool to, like, have a company move out here and it might attract other, like Steve said, other companies to maybe look at us like we are business-friendly. So I'm really excited. And then the other side of it is to, like, how do we promote our downtown businesses that want to, like, that they can eat at and all that? So it's not just them moving here, how do we overall, like, help our business development in general? So it's the only thing I have to say. But thank you.
Erin did a great job with this, really.
No doubt.
Yes.
I was just going to say, I mean, I think this also speaks to sort of the importance of having the role that Erin's in as well. Obviously Erin herself is fantastic, but you know, the fact that we've carved out this role, I think this is exactly the kind of opportunity that, you know, we wanted to try to leverage when we created the economic development position. So it's great to see it coming to fruition in this and so many other things, Erin, that you've worked on over the last year.
And I'll just add to that. I think it is wonderful, you know, when we talked about becoming a green communities, we talked a lot about why that zoning is in that area to be able to allow for some of these kind of newer tough tech or clean energy companies. So we are thrilled that you're joining us in Wakefield and can't wait to see some of those press releases go out with Wakefield and the byline that you're disrupting the industry.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Okay, so we do need a vote on this.
A motion to approve the TIF as presented.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the TIF as presented.
So moved, second.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion from the council? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor McLean?
I'm voting yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Congratulations and welcome to Wakefield.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So the council is aware that there are a couple of other hurdles. The state's Economic Assistance Coordination Council will be meeting on this on the 24th of March and then Town Meeting, at our Town Meeting as well. So there's a lot of different eyes that need to look at this, so. We're the first ones. Lot of acronyms. Yeah, lot of acronyms.
So what does it have to, Town Meeting has to just-
Town Meeting has to do every TIF, yes. So this will be an article, this will be on our list.
So we should make sure that the town understands too and we have a, and through the packet, that Nanoramic's also made a point to say, you know, they're going to try to hire from Wakefield and use subcontractors from Wakefield, one reasonable. And I think that that's an important thing for the community to be aware of as well.
Thank you.
And I think, Madam Chair, if I could also say, I mean, the agreement also does say if any of those sort of milestones aren't met in terms of hiring and moving to town, obviously the TIF doesn't-
Right, there's a review of it every year.
And so I think that's another point to recognize as people vote on this at Town Meeting.
Maybe one other thing I want to mention is that our company, we have a global network of partnerships with different automotive OEMs and battery manufacturers from all over the world. And on, you know, every week we host different site visits. So, you know, a delegation from Korea would fly in to visit us and spend a couple of days, so they'd be staying in the area, eating in the restaurants as well and drive some high priority traffic to the area, which is also, I think, can be considerate.
Good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you.
Item number eight, fiscal year 2023 budgets and Finance Committee Subcommittee, wow, that's a, Finance Committee Subcommittee Recommendations, which is essentially all to say budget time for DPW. Kevin, would you like to start us off? Or are we starting off, Mr. Sullivan, at Finance Committee? And I think Joe must be, there's Joe. Okay, I think we have everyone now.
I'll give a quick overview and then I'll turn it over to Joe or Jim. The DPW budget actually consists of four separate items. We have the operating budget. We have the snow and ice budget. We have the water budget, Water Enterprise budget, and the SOAR Enterprise budget. So real quickly, the operating budget for next year, we're requesting an increase of $151,034. This increase breaks down under Personal Services. The increase is $83,884, which includes contractual and negotiated increases. One item that's not included in here is the labor is contract is pending, so that's not included. Under Purchase of Services, the increase is $57,520. The main increase here is, under the Building Division, the cost of natural gas has increased quite a bit. So the increase in that line item for next year is $41,020. Other materials and supplies, the motor fuel line item has increased $9,630. The operating budget total request for fiscal '23 is $6,657,369, with $6,565,647 coming from the tax levy and $91,722 from available funds. The available funds consist of $43,721 from the perpetual care fund, $1 from the park trust funds, and $48,000 from the sale of cemetery lots. The snow and ice budget for fiscal '23, we are level funding at $850,000. The SOAR Enterprise budget is an overall increase of $148,588. The new budget for fiscal '23 is $9,130,721. We have a couple increases in here under Equipment Maintenance and Software. There's a $20,000 increase to that line item that is used for a meter reading software. And also, there's an increase in the MWRA assessment of $106,910. The Water Enterprise, the overall budget decreased in fiscal '23 by $95,748, for a total of $6,182,100. We have increased the Equipment Maintenance and Software line item again. It coincides with the SOAR budget. There's meter reader software included. There's an increase in Professional Services of $25,000, which is when we need to go outside for water breaks, for items that we can't do in-house, we increase that line item. And we decrease the MWRA's assessment, $220,282. With that, I will turn it over to either Jim or Joe.
Yeah, this is Jim. I'm the chairperson for the DPW Subcommittee of the Finance Committee. And just a couple of points. There are four of us that sat down with Joe and the team. And overall, we're happy with the budget. We have no major concerns with the budget. The water budget going down, obviously, was no argument whatsoever. The SOAR Enterprise budget going up minimally. In the other item, there were no new additional employees. That was one thing that we were looking to hear and understand in the overall increases. Many of the line items are level funded. And I'm sure Joe will get into a little more. But Subcommittee, myself and three others, we were, you know, happy as we reviewed the budget and content with the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for those watching, my name is Joseph Conway, Public Works Director. Joining me tonight are Ann Waite, DPW Business Manager, and Bill Renaud, Town Engineer. Mr. Gill, Chair Sullivan, they essentially covered most of the major talking points that I wanted to get across tonight from presenting this in front of you. I'm just going to add a few additional points to some things that might have been previously covered for context. So on the tax side, Personal Services was exactly how Accountant Gill described that. I just wanted to elaborate. In the Purchase of Services account, there is a line item increase in Administration for Licensing. Essentially, that's a software licensing that Ann and I use all the time for some of the financials that we're doing day-to-day. Mr. Gill had talked about in Buildings, the increase for electricity and natural gas, excuse me. This is developed, this is a multi-year consumption average. So we basically have about 25 years of longitudinal data of what our buildings are using as far as kilowatt-hours and then cubic footage for gas. We compare the federal short-term energy outlook, their rate projections, and then have a conversation with the folks over at Municipal Gas and Light. And we try to figure out what they think would be the limits to their rates for the year. Once we get a sense on what we need to use as a number, we multiply that by the average total consumption, and we get our totals for the year. An interesting thing, just to point out, this year, we're going to have a change in occupancy at the Hurd School. That's going to be put back online and used as some swing space during the public safety building renovation. So that's something we're going to be paying attention to because the usage in that building will obviously fluctuate. Just going through a couple more lines. In Parks and Forestry, we show an increase of 5,000. It's just to cover some increase in costs for some of the crane rental and tree work that we're doing. And then in the Highway Division, we show an increase of 9,000. And essentially, what this is, traffic lines, line item, is historically budgeted too low. We always overspend it. So we're trying to incrementally bridge the budget gap there. And then in Catch Basin Cleaning, we're going to change the scope of the budget to include the vendors that we bring in to help us with that, to actually provide an inspection with a fillable form for every asset that they touch out in the field. As mentioned before, Materials and Supplies, we see an increase only in fuel. The same methodology for this is done as in Buildings. We take a multi-year fuel average and multiply it by a projected cost. And then in the Snow and Ice budget, as was just mentioned, we are recommending level funding. I will say, this time next year, we will probably look to start increasing that a little bit. But we're trying to see how some of the snow plow driver shortages play out and then how some of the things with inflation seem to be facing us towards the end of this summer. Moving into the Enterprises really quickly. On the sewer end, as is mentioned, a preliminary sewer assessment from the MWRA has increased 2.3%, $106,000 and change. I think it's important to highlight that, with the exception of the MWRA, the town's request is less than 1 half, 1%. We're actually looking for 0.4640% increase in the sewer enterprise. And then lastly, but certainly not least, the sewer assessment from the MWRA represents approximately 75 and 1/2% of the sewer budget. Likewise, in Water, as you heard, our water assessment has actually decreased through the year, saving the town approximately $220,000. The water assessment from the MWRA represents approximately 42 and 1/2% of this budget. Both of these enterprises are self-funded and self-sustaining. One other of the larger increases on the water side and another increase in sewer as well, it's group insurance in Water, is up $43,000. So as far as the operating budgets are concerned, I would open up comments or questions at this time.
Great. Do we have questions for anyone on the DPW team, Finance Committee or Accounting? Counselor Chines?
Thank you. And thank you for going through that. And, you know, Mr. Conway, Ms. Waite, and Mr. Renaud for, you know, I think, you know, responsible stewardship of the budget. You know, as you look at some of these increases, and I know we certainly have a contract to kind of settle out for this, but it certainly is a good overall number. I had a couple of sort of more specific questions I just wanted to understand a little bit better. The first, starting with snow and ice. Do you have a sense, Joe, as to where we're running from a spend perspective so far in this fiscal year? I know we were at about 475 through 1231. We've had a couple of storms since then. Are we at the 850, above, below?
We are right now. The one thing I'm waiting for, salt deliveries when we order them. For whatever reason, the month of March just won't quit. So I'm waiting for the invoicing on that to give you an actual total. I believe, right now, we are going to be around the 920 mark.
Okay.
So worst-case scenario, we'll probably be coming back to talk about a slight increase to that. But so long as we don't have to cook the plows up and have another long-duration plowable event, we should be in relatively good shape.
Great. Thank you. The second question I had was related to the Purchase of Services in the Engineering Department. I noticed around the Stormwater Program Management, we're level funding that at $150,000. It looks like we've spent kind of well below that over the last few years. And I was wondering, you know, Mr. Renaud or Mr. Conway, if you could just comment on that and help us understand the long-term plan there. You know, year, through mid-year, we were spending about $26,000 out of $150,000 budget. Last year, it looks like it was $44,000 total. Can you comment on that?
Joe, do you want me to take that?
Yep, absolutely. So I'll just really quickly, the WART 26, which is essentially the halfway point in the year, does a decent job of explaining the expenditures. The one thing it doesn't exactly translate awesome is encumbrances. So I can tell you that through the past couple of years, we've spent that budget full. Some of it, we have tied up in the project up on Pickleball Court behind Bets Field. And then we'll have the same thing happen this year as well. Bill, I don't know if you have anything else you want to additionally add to that.
No, that's just so, basically, today, if you were to look at the budgets today, we are pretty close to spending that through. So, and that includes all the encumbrances from the previous years. So as we've worked through, I've cobbled together some of those dollars to get a larger project done. So at times, I've done that since I've been here. But going forward, I think we're looking at more of a long-term plan. And we'll be coming to you next year with a longer-term vision for where we see, you know, the annual drainage costs going. And we'll have a little bit of that, I think, in the next, the next agenda item, too.
Okay. So as I look at, for example, the fiscal 2021 spend, which is reported here at $44,000, we have another, call it, $100,000 of incurred expenses that weren't paid out in fiscal 2021? Is that the right way of thinking about this?
Yes.
Sorry, I saw a slight nod. Was that a yes?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. My apologies.
No, that's okay. Just didn't know if I was seeing a yes or just a head move.
I'll be audible next time, I promise.
No worries. No, thank you for going through that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The last question I had was around the Forestry Department in terms of trees. It looks like under Materials and Supplies, is it? Yes. We've got, we have $15,000 budgeted for trees. Is that for new trees to be planted? Or is that something else?
That line item is solely for the purpose of replanting public shade trees. So that line item, combined with the community donations, the state earmark this year that we're lucky to get, would all go to planted green trees.
Okay. And roughly, how many trees does that get us? I guess I'm curious as to whether that's enough for, if that's something, you know, in a future year, we should think about maybe increasing?
Bear with me for one second. So that line right there would cover approximately 60 trees that would be planted by Public Works staff. Honestly, if the success of community and some of the monies we were able to get through the developer contribution or the state delegation weren't so good, we probably would have had to address that and bump that number up. Luckily, we've been able to find alternative sources to keep that level funded for the time being. Those external sources were to dry up at certainly somewhere that we would address in the coming four years.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just something, again, and it does sound like we've, particularly with the earmark, we've got some good opportunities this year. But, you know, certainly for relatively small dollars, it feels like that might be an opportunity in the future for us to look at. You know, I know that the forestry team's busy already, but it feels like this might be an area where they'd be happy to do a little bit more if they had the resources to do it.
Absolutely.
Great, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And again, I, you know, looking at the budget overall, I appreciate just the responsible stewardship of the budget that you guys have shown and, you know, all the answers today that you've gone through. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll stay in my capacity as the liaison to Department of Public Works. I, the entire team has done a phenomenal job. I have, you know, been in touch with Mr. Conway on a regular basis, Mr. Renaud. And I just know that the work that they're doing is always with an eye towards, you know, making sure that they're being careful stewards of our tax dollars with that. So I appreciate that. And I'm not sure that enough people realize just the depth of what DPW does. And then you look at all the different categories that we're talking about here. It's really a crossroad in so many ways. With respect to the trees, I also wanted to point out that the equipment for tree removal, that number is up in large part, I know, because I'm speaking with Dennis Fazio about that and Mr. Conway. We have a lot of aged trees. And we obviously had issues back in, show 2020, I believe it was, with the storm where a lot of those came, number came down. But since that time, too, after we get to the 75-year mark for a lot of these trees, they just become safety concerns. And so some of them have to be taken down. And so I think we will have a real opportunity here now to be able to plant the next generation of them in place of a lot that we're taking down. But, you know, if you have this tree canopy, and I spoke with Mr. Conway last week about this, the more we can expand our tree canopy across town, you know, there are significant positive impacts to climate change relative to that. And I know that we can also bring in, and we have in the past, outside landscapers as well to assist with our own department, you know, our workforce, to be able to make sure that we get as many trees planted as budgets allow for. So I think this is going to be a really good year going forward, you know, because of the earmark that was mentioned and the community donations and what we've budgeted here now. So I think this is going to be a really good year going forward, you know, because of the earmark that was mentioned and the community donations and what we've budgeted here now. But I would, I would also be interested in coming back and revisiting this next year to see where we're at, because I think we have a real opportunity. Thank you.
Great. Council McLean? You're muted.
Makes a difference when you mute yourself. Good budget, Joe.
Thank you.
Did want to ask you a question about concrete, you know, the sidewalk. Are we, should we be considering maybe a little bit higher budget on sidewalks and patching in the future? Because I do hear a lot of people, you know, talking about the roads, especially after winter.
So just to touch on the sidewalk piece specifically, so that is something that we're going to want to budget a little bit differently for in the future. Right now, we are waiting for two things, and Bill, feel free to jump in. We are waiting for the Safe Streets Working Group and MAPC to finish their study about bike routes and different travel destinations throughout town. Essentially, what we're looking for in that is trying to figure out the destinations that the people are trying to go. And the other thing is that, much like the roads program, Bill's team has been to the task of evaluating all of our sidewalks on a metricable score from zero to a hundred and make some of our data-driven decisions based on that. Those are two things that are in the near stages of completion and will use certainly for a planning tool. Some other things, you know, anytime that we're paving the road, we're obviously going to address the sidewalks as we're going by now. And then Governor Baker this year has filed for a supplemental chapter ninety bill. If we were to get that, he's asking essentially for another hundred million dollars to add to the bond bill. If that was to come in and prove to be something that we feel could benefit from, it would be our goal to take those dollars and use it for a sidewalk project.
Do we do the patching ourselves, or is it contracted out, or a mixture?
It's a little bit of a mixture. Some of the patching, where it's more appropriate to use machine fill, things that we don't currently own and operate, we'll bring in help. And we have some mechanisms, some of our permitting that pay for that. If it's a small pothole, it's a shovel fill or two. We have two crews a day that go out and handle that in-house.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Council Danahue.
I guess, thank you. I had similar questions in terms of like the trees in the sidewalk repair. And how do you determine, I'm just curious how you determine like the allocation of in your budget of how much for sidewalk repair, how much for like, you know, fence maintenance and sign maintenance and all of that? How is that usually determined?
So one of the things that Public Works has spent a lot of time on in the last couple of years is updating our asset management tools and trying to get all that digital. And so we've been concentrating on getting good quality inventories of every asset that we have, recording their condition, and then comparing that against life expectancy to sort of predict, you know, the failure rate and what we have coming up against us. I'd say as far as street signs are concerned, generally, once they go up, there is a period of time where they will eventually fade. But as long as there is no vehicular interaction, they pretty much stay up and don't cause us too much of an issue. As far as sidewalks, I mentioned those two reports that we're putting together. And I would suggest that maybe in fiscal twenty-four, we think about maybe coming together with a warrant article to fund some new sidewalk construction, fill in some of the, fill in some of the gaps around town that have been noted by citizens. We're certainly hearing it. Just want to make sure that we have the data to make the right decision and get the best bank for our budget.
And like fences, I saw fence, was it fence repair that was forty-five hundred dollars? Does that seem, that seems like a little low, because we have a lot of fences.
It is. So generally, that, that is something, you know, there may be years where we spend all of it, and maybe years where we don't spend any. Think of that as, you know, the tree leader falls down and clips a chain link fence. If we can repair it, I will buy the material and repair it. If not, we might have to bring in some help. That's, if it becomes an issue where we feel like it's a sore spot in our budget, it's certainly something that we would look at annually and address appropriately if there was a need.
So is there any plan for, so say you have a fence that's not falling down, but it looks really bad. It's all rusted and things like that. Do we have, is there money in the budget that replaces that? Or do we only, or do we only replace fences when they fall down?
Nope. So in the operating budget, no. But some of the requests that we ask for annually seem to always revolve around fence work. The last few years, we're pretty heavy in a lot of the baseball and softball fields, replacing some of the, the old fences that didn't, you know, necessarily fall down, but they are well past their front. I know that in the pickleball court, we're going to address the fencing there. And then our eyes will start turning on better fields. They could say the fencing, at least at the backstop there on Bleacher, needs some attention. So we would go after the capital planning committee and seek funding through them for larger projects like that.
Is there anything in the budget for that, for this year in capital planning?
So they haven't approved it yet, but we have requests for some attention to be done at Molten Playground, Molten Baseball Field and Sullivan Playground, those two areas.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Santos?
Joe, Ann and Bill, I just wanted to thank you and echo what others have said. I went through the budget, and it's such a trim, responsible and thoughtful budget. It's very easy to follow, but I, you can see how careful you were. So I just wanted to take this, my last opportunity to publicly thank you, sitting in this chair, for, again, presenting such a great budget, the three of you. Thanks so much.
Don't have to be so happy about it.
It's hiding my tears.
Council Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think another thing that's really important to underscore here is the success of the roads, bonds, and really what that has done for us in terms of being able to, you know, bring in more miles each year in terms of improving our road, you know, our road conditions and repaving. I don't know, Mr. Renaud, if you have the stats offhand, but each, you know, in the coming, the next couple of years, if we're talking exponentially more, more roads, you know, more miles for being covered, we have what eighty-eight within town, I believe. And, you know, for people who may not be familiar, DPW really uses some great technology to scan all the roads, to then prioritize the roads based on the most immediate need after too many years of not keeping pace with improvements. And once we get to a point where we're able to have the roads generally in better condition, it's going to be far more cost-effective to maintain those roads. But that's, that's a multi-year process. And I don't know, Mr. Renaud, if you're able to speak to where we are and where we're headed with that. But that's, I think, a really exciting thing. That was a result of town meetings supporting the request for that kind of relief.
So we had a four-year program, if you all remember. So back in fiscal twenty-one, we were doing, this was prior to the bond. We were doing about a mile, maybe a mile and a quarter worth of roads annually. Back in fiscal twenty-two, we upped that to about two point five miles. That's actually been awarded. Portions of the drainage that would be done on those roads are completed. We had a little bit of a snag with COVID and delivery of curbing that delayed the paving happening. But we have two and a half miles awarded that will be constructed this spring. And then the bid for fiscal twenty-three, or, you know, the calendar year twenty-two, the first phase is on, is on the street right now. We're expecting bids to be, to be in by Wednesday. And that's about four miles a road. And then we have a phase two that would include another two miles for this year. So, so definitely, you're going to see a lot more roads being paved over the next couple of years.
I think, I think the other highlight to that, obviously, you know, road conditions are really important to many people. The other piece of that is being able to expand services too. And Mr. Conway has been able to, to make it so that the pit has expanded hours as well, which I'm incredibly excited about and will be sure to promote. But I think that's, I think that's a real benefit to residents. And I know that the feedback has been good. I know the numbers have been good in terms of people, you know, more people coming to the pit now and making use of it. I know the recycling piece with the cardboard has also been beneficial as well. I know Chair Smith-Galvin was the driving force behind that. And so I think there's a, you know, there's a lot of good that's coming out of this budget for very small dollars being spent on, from an increased perspective.
And just to reinforce some of that, I know Safe Streets Working Group has been working closely with the MAPC on this bike ped. And I'm really hoping, Joe and Bill, and I think that we're on, on track for this, is to prioritize sidewalks similar to how we prioritize roads. So when we clear snow, I mean, obviously, snow clearing of roads is a priority, but there are sidewalks around. And as we're looking at that budget going forward, I want to make sure that we have, have that calculated in there as well. So as you say, Joe, we're getting to, I think the study is going to be really valuable and really point us towards what we need to, to fund and maintain, similar to how we've long done with roads. So. Any other, yeah, go ahead, Joe.
I was just going to say, I think everybody on our side would completely agree with that statement.
And I should include Ann in that. She's been very involved as well. Anything else on?
If I just said one thing, that the staff there from Talk to Biden does just a fabulous job. They're the, the people that go out in the middle of the night. They're out there, you know, plowing on Christmas Day a couple of years ago and leaving their families and making a safe and going into people's basements and shutting off their water when there are issues. Just fabulous, dedicated employees that really care, and it really shows on them. So do want to thank them.
They respond so quickly.
Yeah, they do. They do. We're lucky to have them.
Great. So with that, probably, we can take a motion to?
Approve the DPW.
How do we want to do this? Can we do?
I'm a great believer you can do it as presented. Yes.
Yes? Can we do as presented? Oh, that would help me out tremendously. Thank you.
So move to approve the DPW budget as presented.
Second.
Great. Any additional discussion?
Just, so this is the DPW budget, the Water and Sewer Enterprise budgets, and the Snow and Ice budget?
That's what I, yes.
Okay.
All together.
All together.
And just so, if anybody's following along at home, there's a one pager that covers all of this. Do we have a motion by Vice Chair Butt and the second by Council Santos? Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Council McLean?
Yes.
Council Dombrowski?
I?
Council Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Council Santos?
Yes.
Council Danahue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great. Thank you very much. But I think you are actually all here for the next article, which is Proposal of DPW Warrant Articles for the May ninth Annual Town Meeting. Joe, are you taking a lead on this?
Unless, Kevin, you don't have to speak on this one, do you? So as we're getting closer to the meeting packet, what the council saw is we got five articles being recommended by both Public Works and the Advisory Board for fiscal twenty-three. So Madam Chair, just as a matter of process, I could just briefly go through each one, and we could stop and discuss them as we move along? Or I could go through the set, and we can refer back, whatever is your pleasure.
Why don't we go through the set?
Okay.
Did you want to share your screen, or do we have a presentation on this?
I wasn't planning on it.
No, you don't have to. It's, it's all in the package. So go ahead and just walk us through. And you're using the presentation that starts with the storage tank?
Yes. So it actually, it actually starts, eminent domain is actually the first article.
Yes, yes. Okay. Proceed. Yep.
So trying to dress this article up every year is quite challenging, because it really is very dull, but at the same time, very important for us. So we're asking that inclusion in the warrant is an article for eminent domain for some of one dollar. This is our annual article that has been submitted probably for the last twenty-five years. And what essentially this is, is an insurance clause for us, our just-in-case tool in our toolbox. The purpose for this is to allow Public Works to acquire small-scale property or easements to facilitate the work that we do related to drainage, roads, sidewalks, water and sewer initiatives. Just moving through the advisory board's letter, the second article listed on that is refuse recycling and yard waste collection. I believe Mr. Mayo shared the budget summary with the council. The request this year is for two million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand and forty-six dollars. The budget is up about four percent in total. The main drivers of this budget are contractual increases for our refuse collection, our recycling collection, and then a increase at the incinerator for disposal of our household waste. The yard waste processing for this year is level funded. That's the removal of all of the brush and greens that we gather through residents coming into the pit. Also related to the services done at the yard waste site, excuse me, we have some contractual increases just for our staff's time there. To Mr. Dombrowski's pleasure, the schedule for this year is that the pit is going to be open from the beginning of April into December, whether pending, maybe even a little bit longer. We will be open every Saturday, the second and fourth Sundays, unless we have a holiday or we have an event on a Saturday where we have a curb-side collection. This section of the budget is up approximately ten thousand dollars, but this also includes increased hours on Sundays. So now both Saturday and Sunday will be open at the same time, eight thirty to four. A slight increase in this budget related to the Household Hatchettage Waste Day Program. One decrease in this unfortunately is in the education program. A couple of things affecting this. Certainly, moving into the schools and asking every third grade in one of the buildings to come down into the gym and, you know, take part in a program with us, we talked about recycling, is something that right now, I think, would probably prove to be a little bit more of a distraction. They're still settling themselves back into what, you know, the new normal school they might look like. Paired with that, we always brought in someone that helped us with this from a company called Earth Dunes. They would come in and sing songs for the kids. Unfortunately, for those of you who may have seen us, Barbara has retired, and she is no longer going around singing about being a bug and compo things. So we'll be looking for an alternative there in the short term, but we don't have one quite yet. And most pleasing, I would say, this year is if you were to put a trend analysis in and compare some of the last fiscal years, approximately six, five, we've noticed that the trend line is actually starting to decrease. So one of the things is apparent is that, you know, when the COVID-nineteen pandemic happened in the beginning, everybody was home. And it felt like everything that everybody was doing ended up on the curb. And we got a little bit nervous because, you know, we didn't know if we were going to be absorbing all of the waste through the curbside collection program. So we had bumped our contingency number up to ten percent just in case, you know, we got hit with a wave that we could be able to financially support that. Based on what we're seeing in our trends, that is correcting itself, and we've moved the contingency number in this budget back to seven and a half percent. This is the historical amount that has always been carried by Public Works up until the pandemic. Lastly, compiling all the costs here, Public Works, we planned for a hundred thousand dollar offset, mentioning, you know, the curbside tonnage, starting to reflect a little bit better numbers, or more pre-pandemic numbers. And then also the effect that the council's bulk sticker initiative has provided. The request without this would have been around two point three million. We've taken a hundred thousand dollars off the top of that, citing these two reasons, and requesting the two ninety-two that we spoke about. Also included in your packet is a request for five million dollar borrowing for the Harts Hill Water Tank Reconstruction. So essentially, what this is, this is water tank for our distribution system. It was installed in nineteen twenty-seven. So we're getting close to the Centennial Mark. It is made out of bolted steel, and it's forty-seven feet wide, at forty-nine feet high, and holds six hundred and forty thousand gallons. So the big question is, what, what does this tank do? This tank essentially works as an expansion tank, similar to the one that most of you have in your homes. This, the reliant share of its work equalizes the pressure throughout our distribution system. So some of the more technical things it does is provide grade line stabilization for hydraulics. This is also the center of the control points for our MWRRA feeds. So depending on what this tank is doing, the level inside of this tank opens and closes some of the valves that we have to take water from the MWRRA. This tank provides a buffering capacity for demand fluctuations, provides passive surge relief to upland and lowland areas in times with this high water use and velocity changes. So the recommendation, the request from Public Works tonight, is authorization to bond five million dollars. And what that's going to do is fund design plans, specifications, project management, and construction services of a brand-new fiberglass fusible with steel. And it's basically an in-kind replacement. The new tank would be a half a foot wider and two feet taller, and it will hold forty thousand gallons of water. Initially, we started off this, both myself, Bill and his group, we looked to see if there's any alternative measures we could do and maybe take this out of service. Unfortunately, the scope of work to be able to do that and the amount of funding it would take couldn't be supported by the enterprises. And if we were to ask the tax lady to help us, it would be a severely heavy bond request to do that. So essentially, we're left with one option, that is to replace it on-site. So the work being planned is to include also all the water mains and valving for this. So when the final construction is done, then we would overlay the road as we work our way up. Next on our list is townwide drainage improvements. This article request for nine hundred thousand dollars is essentially two parts. Some of these improvements were discovered through due diligence, and one section of these improvements was actually discovered by an active failure that both Bill and I were able to witness. All of these improvements are adjacent to Vernon Street, the area of White Circle and Delano Lane. Quickly, just to run through it, White Circle is a dead end off of Vernon Street. We'll be looking to upgrade the drainage in that street from eighteen to twenty-four inch and bring the dead end all the way out into Vernon Street. From Vernon Street, we're looking to continue heading south and upgrade the twelve-inch line that's out there now, which is too small, to a thirty-inch line to Delano Lane. And then from Delano Lane, the drainage takes a cross-country turn in between number two oh one and two oh three Vernon Street and heads to Daniel Road. And this section of this, I will be upgrading to thirty to thirty-six. And I believe this is all to get us to the ten-year storm bill, correct?
Five-year storm.
Five-year storm.
Yeah, it's a big large watershed to get to that spot.
So one of the things, we were notified by two oh one and two oh three Vernon Street that the drain there had failed. And the only, the best way I could describe it is, is either aluminum or corrugated metal pipe. Remember the old metal slinkies? If you took one and stretched it out, that's essentially what the pipe looked like after this thing failed. So last but not least, there's one small section on Vernon Street. This is the intersection of Quarter Street and Vernon to Wayland. There's actually a twenty-four-inch corrugated metal pipe there. We're looking to replace the short run with reinforced front bree. And now last on the list, but certainly not least, the Broadway Crossing Quiet Zone improvements. And now, last on the list, but certainly not least, Broadway crossing quiet zone improvements. So, uh, we've all spent a lot of time talking about this, and this is a topic that I'm sure everybody is very well at dispute on. The request here is for bonding authorization, uh, for the amount of $2 million. What we're requesting is the authorization to borrow up to $2 million to carry out design and construction of quad gates along the railroad to get a protection credit below the threshold required to, um, maintain our pre-rule quiet zone status. The good news, Congressman Moulton's office has come through with $1.2 million earmark for the town. Um, this is, think of this as a fail-safe or, uh, contingency plan in the event that something were to happen and we needed to get a little bit more funding. Um, that's basically the summary of, of the articles.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So yeah, so I'll open it up to questions, um, from the counselors on any of the five items. Counsel Chines?
Thank you. I have, uh, first of all, thank you for the, the presentation and all the backup as well. Um, just a, a couple of questions. Uh, I'm going to start, start from the back with the quiet zone, um, improvements. Could you just clarify, which are, which intersections are we looking to, uh, add the quad gates? I, I knew we were talking about, uh, Prospect Street. It looks like the presentation refers to two intersections, and I, I wasn't sure, uh, which one was the second one.
Yeah, so in, in all likelihood, Broadway would be included, um, and then the second one would either be Prospect, um, and we may look at another intersection, uh, Albion Street as well. It all depends really on, on traffic counts, so.
Okay.
As part of the design, we'll go get traffic counts, whatever gives us the most bang for the buck to lower that, that risk index is the one, the, the two that we would use.
Okay, so Broadway is a definite, um, for obvious reasons, based on the last year of discussion there, uh, and then either Prospect or Albion. Okay. Um, second question I had, sorry, going back to the drainage. So the request there, the 900,000, is that a, uh, is, are we looking at that as, uh, as, uh, bonding for the 900? Bonded, okay. Um, and similarly on the water tower, I mean, I know that's bonded. Is, is that, um, the, the debt service on that, have we been including that in our kind of long-term bond forecasts?
Joe, that's on the water, on the water side?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, that, that has been, uh, when we talk to bond council, that has been brought up as something that, um, is coming in the future. Um, so it, so it happens to be right now, uh, between today and fiscal '24, we're going to see approximately $300,000, uh, of debt payment drop out of the water enterprise. So much like the approach that the town took when they did the athletic fields and the library came off, I believe, um, we are going to time this up so that when, uh, the debt payment drops out, the new debt comes in. And then barring anything, uh, crazy coming out of the Fed, this impact should be relatively close to budget neutral.
Okay.
We'll obviously have to wait and see what the interest rates come in at, but it's something that, um, you know, from some of the projections we've been running, and we're using, you know, 4%, 4.5% as a forecast, um, it'd be less than six figures, uh, with the impact to the budget when this payment fully comes online.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
You're welcome.
Mike, that was my first. Thank you. Um, Counsel McLean. You're muted.
I gotta stop doing that.
Joe, quick, quick question on the, on the tank. Um, we talk about hiring local when we can, and I know there is a good-sized, uh, concrete tank company in, in Wakefield. Have you, uh, you know, are you, are you wedded to the gl- glass line bolted steel, uh, or have you looked at other options? Just curious.
That's, that's an excellent question. So, uh, to this point in time, the only thing that, that we've done related to this is essentially a feasibility study. Um, and we did have the tank manufacturer that you referenced come up and view the site with us. And unfortunately, the, the constraints of the space up there, they don't have the lay-down, uh, area to be able to put their product on the hill. That's why we referenced the all, the other material, but it's certainly something that we looked at and trying to figure out, uh, you know, the feasibility of the project. Fortunately, um, you know, the local vendor, um, couldn't make it work with some of the constraints that we have up there.
Great. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Counsel Dombrowski.
You're better, Chair. Um, I, I think Mr. Conway, too, it's important to highlight, um, at the, um, Advisory Board Public Works meeting, this was discussed. And I know we're at about the 95-year mark with this tank. Um, could you maybe just also explain what, what it would look like if there was a failure of, of this tank?
Um, so, uh, obviously, one of the things you would see, um, anytime this tank comes offline is something that probably, uh, elevates the blood pressure of our water supervisor a little bit, because, um, our ability to regulate pressure is constrained. Um, one of the things you can see if this tank was to go away and not, not be replaced in time is, uh, elevated levels of water breaks. The other thing you would see is there's the potential, um, that, not that anybody would ever want to see something like this ever happen again, but if the church fire unlocked, the H Street was to happen again without this tank, um, there could be a portion of that, at least initially, until our staff was on scene, where, you know, they might have pumped all the water, um, completely out of the mains before they could, they could get back onto the fire. I don't know, is that, I don't know if that, I don't know if that completely answers your question. I'm trying to remember what we were talking about at the meeting.
There was, there was also just the question of the, the integrity of the tank itself, if that were to be compromised.
Oh, yes, so, sure. Um, so 640,000 gallons, um, at the top of a hill. So you can imagine, um, God forbid, if there were ever, you know, a catastrophic failure of that tank, it would, it would look more like a, like an avalanche or a mudslide, uh, than anything else. I imagine the, the propulsion of that water wouldn't really have a hard time in anything standing in its way, so. Certainly, certainly something, uh, that we're cautiously optimistic that we're well ahead of, but we, we certainly keep that in the back of our minds. Something that if we defer too long, could be haunting and working in shadows.
Thank you.
And I'll just, I'll just add on, on to that, those roads up to that water tank are extremely narrow. So I assume you're going to be really involving the community, the neighbors in, at the very beginning, because I can just, it's, it's difficult to even encircle that, that neighborhood now, nonetheless, when there's going to be major construction happening.
Uh, much, much like some of the rest of our, uh, large-scale projects, um, should town meeting give us the authorization to start moving forward, the first step would be to engage the others. Um, you know, it's no secret this, this will be disruptive, um, you know, for a period of time. But we want to make sure that we hear their concerns, and anything that we could do, uh, pre-planning to mitigate some of that is going to be absolutely paramount, uh, anything that we do up there, so.
Yeah.
I would say that the first step was the feasibility piece, uh, to kind of know what we can and cannot do. The second piece is to seek authorization, uh, to move forward the project, and then we'll be engaged in the later.
Thanks. And, and maybe on a similar note, the, um, the drainage, do we have all the DEP approvals for that before we go seek funding? And, and I'll tell you where I'm coming from on this, is the Grafton that is still pending, and, you know, who knows whether that will ever happen. But I think we really got the neighborhood's hopes up a lot, and now that project, you know, who knows whether it will move forward? Are we pretty confident that we can move these projects forward?
Yes, we are very confident. Yeah, we haven't gone through the permitting yet. Um, the permitting on it, and most of this is all cross-country and not in wetlands, just, just the discharge itself that's getting upsized, so. Um, it's a pretty minor permitting process, uh, not as large as the other, uh, the other color.
So we have a high level of confidence that this will actually get done. Okay, good.
Sure.
Um, so I'll just go down my list while, and, and in terms of the trash, and I'm really glad to hear that we're lowering the, um, contingency. I mean, I just noticed anecdotally that I feel like a lot of trash cans are overfilled, that there's extra bags that are not in the paybags, um, just from what I note. Are we enforcing that, um, or is that just a, a limited case and, and not something that's happening townwide?
Um, I would say any, anytime that an instance like that is brought to our attention, we have a full-time employee that is out enforcing, uh, those type of things daily. Um, we try to, you know, knock and announce and have a conversation about things before we, you know.
Of course.
You know, the, the enforcement piece comes in, uh, but certainly, uh, daily, you know, we're interacting, uh, with folks, uh, about issues like that. Um, I would say if, if anybody on the council or anybody in the public in general has any questions or concerns related to that, please let us know. Um, this is something we're ready to handle almost instantly, um, you know, and we can take care of.
Great. And I guess I'll just finally ask, have you seen any, um, impact of the composting program in town on numbers?
So I think Anne actually has, I'm going to throw, I'm going to put her on the spot, she has some of the compa- composting numbers. I'll de- I'll defer to her for a moment.
I think you're muted, Anne.
We can't hear you. Nope.
Oh, no.
She's got a new, new camera.
I know, it's, it's tough. It's okay, you can come back to us on this.
Uh, I can, I think I have a copy of a note I can, I can give you. Um, so to date, so to date, there's, uh, 371 active accounts. Uh, we average, uh, about a ton and a half a week. Since the program's inception, we've generated 146.6 tons. Uh, we are at the point now where we believe we have 140 more, um, accounts to sign up before we hit the next, uh, pricing, uh, drop. And, uh, Anne was successful in getting another year of RDP points, and we will be announcing shortly that we're going to be able to subsidize, uh, some of the starter kits again to continue that, and hopefully get us to that next threshold where everybody sees the cost benefit.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for all your work on that. Other questions on the warrants? No? So, do we have to take each of these separately, Steve?
I think I would.
Okay. I knew you'd say that. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, we can do them quick.
I didn't want to disappoint.
Okay, so do I have a motion, um, to accept the eminent domain of $1?
And I would just add from the tax levy.
From the tax levy.
So moved.
Seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Aye.
Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So seven, zero. Um, do I have a motion to approve $2,292,046 from the, is that tax levy, too?
Yes.
From the tax levy for ref- refuse, recycling, and yard waste.
So moved.
Seconded.
Um, motion by Counseler Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos, any discussion? No? Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Aye.
Vice, uh, Counselor, uh, Danahue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. For the third warrant, um, borrowing in the amount of $5 million, um, for the Harts Hill Water Tank Design and Construction.
To pay from water receipts.
To be paid from water receipts. So moved.
Seconded.
Um, so moved by Counselor, um, Butt, and seconded by Counselor Santos, discussion on Harts Hill. Hearing none. Um, Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh, do I have a motion for $900,000 from?
I think we bonded that.
That roby bond in borrowing, um, for the townwide drainage reconstruction project, as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by, um, Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos, any discussion on the drainage reconstruction? Hearing none. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Finally, um, borrowing in the amount of $2 million for the Broadway MBTA Train Signal Improvement Project.
Could I make one suggestion on that?
Yes.
Do we say up to?
Up to?
To, up to, because if, you know, great working with, um, uh, Congressman Moulton's office, he really came through and kept me very informed along the way. And that was a fun text to send to everybody, wasn't it?
So just for clarification on that, if the 1.2 million does come through, then we would only have to fund?
Exactly.
$100,000 of it. So, okay.
So up to was kind of.
Okay. So let, so let me rephrase that before we do the motion. So, um, motion to borrow up to $2 million for the Broadway MBTA Train Signal Improvement Project.
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos, any discussion on this? Hearing none. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Thank you to the entire DPW team.
Thank you very much.
And finance committee and accounting for being here. See you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, item number 10, committee updates. Um, this is our quarterly update from the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, I, Amy, are you here for that, too?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Dave's going to be presenting, but I'm going to, just in case.
You can sit there and, come, come, come. Um, so I don't know, um, share who we have online. I'll give you a minute to pull them up.
Yeah, I think we're going with Conservation first.
Okay.
It's going to be Barbara Mano, Jim Luciani, and I think Frank's with us, too.
Okay.
Yeah, they should all be on now.
Okay.
Okay, now you can hear me, right?
Oh, yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Okay, so Conservation Commission is a seven-member board. Um, recently, um, we started, uh, getting associate members, two members, which is turning out to be really good for us, because, uh, we are losing people, like Frank's going to resign, and so we can move someone up into his position. But it takes a little time for people to get used to conservation, actually what we do, and the longer timeframe we can have them as just an associate member. Uh, it gives the, it, it's better, we can pull them up to the next position and be sure that there's still no lag in, in the way we administer the act. We have two part-time staff, and they total like 20 hours a week. Our responsibility is basically the Wetlands Protection Act and, uh, and, um, and stormwater management. Um, we have been doing some public, um, outreach. We did a couple of webinars on, um, hang on a second. We had a couple of webinars we did on light pollution, which is really, um, important for, for wildlife. And we did that because, uh, what we're trying to do is get the people on the fringes of these wildlife areas to not have so much light at night, all night long, because it ruins the, the, it ruins their system, you know, for the, for the animals. Doesn't sound like a big deal, but it really is, and it's quite a bit that goes on as far as how much lighting you put out there, what color the light is. Uh, that does affect the wildlife as well. So we were hoping with this webinar that we would educate people as to what the downfalls are of having, you know, you know, these big massive lights in their backyard shining in on the wetlands. We also did, uh, a webinar for, um, Offshoots, which is a company that does bioretention systems. And bioretention is a great tool for conservation, and I know, um, it's, um, it, it does a lot to, um, remove pollutants into the, in, in the soluble pollutants in the, in the, the water. Um, what else can I tell you about it? I know Bill has been doing some planning for, along Main Street, and he's going to be using bioretention, I believe, which I think is probably the best thing you could possibly do for that area. Um, as far as what we've done for this, last, last year, we had 18 notices of intent filed with us. Now, we had two abbreviated notices of resource area delineation. We had two requests for determination of applicability. We issued seven certificates of compliance. We issued three enforcement orders. Um, we had seven tree, um, removal requests. And this has been a stumbling block for us, because it's hard to go onto someone's property and tell them that they can't take down a tree. And, but we tried to explain to them why we, if we don't want a tree taken down, why it is we're not putting, taking the tree down. And we try to, uh, you know, I mean, I don't want to tell someone that, that they can't take it down a tree, and it's not, you know, it's dangerous to their house or to children playing in the yard. Um, we do try to recommend that they check with an obrist and make sure that the, the tree is failing. Um, just, just to try to avoid that, but in some cases, we just have to, we do need to take the trees down because they- we do need to take the trees down because they, they are, they're, they're not good in the location as far as the wetlands go, or we find that we have a loss of canopy, and the canopies can't be replaced. I mean, if you take a mature tree, that's maybe forty or fifty years old, and you try to replace it, the canopy, it's just, it's gonna take another forty or fifty years, so you can imagine that there's gonna be changes in that environment that we try to avoid. We have currently five notice of intent hearings open right now, and we are trying to, we're taking your advice from our last time I spoke to you. You mentioned that if we were working with other boards, and we're trying to work now with the Planning Board. We have a project that's important to both of us, and we're gonna, we're gonna arrange to have a hearing together, also to do a site walk together, which I think is really beneficial. The site walks are good because everyone gets a real hands-on look at what we're talking about. And it just, it just clarifies a lot rather than just looking on the plan. And that's about all I have.
Great. Any questions? Could you identify yourself as well?
Yes, Jim Luciani.
Great, I wasn't sure. Okay, thank you, Mr. Luciani.
Yes.
Any questions from the councilors? Any comments? Council Chines?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Luciani, for the, the update and, and really the great work that, that you're doing. I, you know, particularly appreciated hearing about the webinars that you've put together. I, I think that's, that's a great opportunity for public education. Just a quick question, you mentioned doing a joint hearing and site walk with the Planning Board. Could you speak a little bit about the, the project that you're, you're doing that for?
Well, we haven't actually received the project yet. But I know it's, it's coming. It's a project for the extension of Stock Ave.
Okay.
And they wanna put, I think, three house lots in that area, and there's, there's wetlands in there as well, so we will be involved with the, with the Planning Board.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, it's really, it's really great to see these committees collaborating. Any other question? Council McLean?
Question to you, Madam Chair, I don't want to ask anything that's inappropriate, but I do know that Conservation Commission issued its own report relative to a property we'll be dealing with later tonight on Water Street, and I was wondering if it'd be appropriate to ask them if they've had any remediation of the issues they brought up relative to that property in July of two thousand and twenty-one.
I'm, I'm not sure I know which property you're talking about.
This is, under about three eighty-three Water Street, there was a conservation report relative to inland banks and bordering vegetated wetlands and bordering lands subject to flooding going back to the, the stream behind the property.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Mayo to comment on that and then if, if Mr. Luciani wants to add anything.
Yes, we have a memo from Rebecca Davis, a conservation agent back in January. Basically, that the, there was no evidence of active erosion into the wetlands or river. They didn't notice any recent clearing of vegetation. Based on this, they do not believe there is an immediate and ongoing threat to the wetlands and/or the river, and they suggested that the homeowner continue on cleaning up the other portions of the lot before he addressed the wetland areas. So that was presented to the council before you joined us.
Okay, so that was an update to the initial letter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the Conservation Commission? Council Dobroski?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Luciani, for this update. I, I think the point you had made about the, the webinar about well, lights is important. If you go down, I know I keep pointing to this, but if you go down Albion, those are dark, dark sky compliant lights, and they do make a huge difference. We don't have the same kind of light pollution we used to have when we had much taller lights that were projecting light out as compared with more directed. And I think that, you know, one thing that I would like to see Conservation Commission continue to focus on is ways in which we can have more of our town focused on dark sky compliant lighting across the board. And I know that's obviously in collaboration with gas and light, but also, Mr. Luciani, when you're working with ZBA or Planning Board, you know, whatever, you know, cross collaborations you have, having that as a higher priority going forward, I, I think would be incredibly important because it certainly is, you know, the impacts to wildlife is, are pretty profound, but also the impacts to humans are incredibly profound as well. And so I think the more we can have an emphasis and focus on that going forward, the better off we'll be as a community. Thank you.
Okay, yep, we can do that.
Yeah, hey, good evening, Barbara Mano, Vice Chair, Conservation. I can add a couple more comments concerning the lighting also. So that's a great point, Mr. Dobroski. You know, a few things, you know, you always want to apply the right amount of light, not too much, right, not too little. You know, dark sky compliant fixtures and shielding, very important. Utilizing warmer tones in the color spectrum. So we're on at three thousand Kelvin, which is, if you think about an incandescent bulb, that's more of the range you want to be as opposed to the blue or white LED that we've seen over the years come out. You want to be in that warmer tone range. You know, you always want to avoid uplighting whenever possible. And the uplighting can do a number of different things. It can interrupt migration of, you know, birds, insects, turtles for that matter. You know, so those are some of the things you want to focus on. And, you know, when you do need to light at night, ideally, you have photo sensors where you shut the lights off at a reasonable time, and they don't come back on until the following evening. You want to really get as much dark sky as possible to mimic the natural, you know, condition. So really, the webinar, it was very valuable for us. And, you know, we look forward to those types of, you know, educational experiences going forward.
Great. And are these the kinds of things, Conservation Commission probably doesn't oversee lighting particularly, but is this where maybe collaborating with Planning or ZBA and others kind of have these lists of good practices might be helpful? I, I know the Environmental Committee's been thinking about similar kind of lists that are not in bylaws necessarily, but are just some good practices to think about when ZBA is reviewing projects.
It is our, we can, we can control it only within our jurisdiction.
Right.
So, but by, by working with the Planning Board, it would actually, it would benefit the whole town.
Absolutely. Great. Anything else for Conservation Commission? No? Thank you, Mr. Luciani, Mr. Mano, for being with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay and listen to Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, since there's so much overlap. Sherry, who's next?
Yes, so next we have Planning Board. We have Matt Lowry, who's the Chair, and we have Bill Spalding, who is Vice Chair. And they should be coming over right now.
We can't, okay, here they come, I was gonna say, we can't.
Yeah.
Okay. Now we can see, yeah, I can see, we can see Matt.
Hello.
Hi, Mr. Lowry. Mr. Spalding?
Hello, good evening.
Matt Lowry, Chair of the Planning Board. I'm here with Bill Spalding, the Vice Chair. Just wanted to briefly go over what we've been working on since we last met. As you know, we don't have a lot of land in town, so the traditional subdivisions are pretty far and few. So we typically probably get one a year. Right now, we're still working on Stark Ave that actually started before our last meeting. The petitioner had a hundred and thirty-five days, or we had a hundred and thirty-five days to act on it unless the petitioner's requested additional time and granted us additional time. So right now, they've given us two extensions, and we have a, up until right now, June first, to make a decision on that. And like Jim Luciano said, we plan on having a joint meeting out there. They are just filing with Conservation right now, so normally on subdivisions such as this, they, they file with the Planning Board and then the Conservation concurrently, so they basically run together. I've pushed to have some extensions from this developer because we want to make sure that our boards overlapped. There are some, some resource areas out there that our boards need to work together in order to develop these plans, so we will be going forward with that. The other subdivisions that we're still working on are Lovis Ave. It's a three-lot subdivision that's in construction right now. One oh seven Prospect Street, a three-lot subdivision that's in construction. And actually, both of those have components that this, the Conservation are looking at at the same time. So they have jurisdiction over them, and we do until they, until we sign off of them and they're completed. One other subdivision that's still going on is a one-lot subdivision on Wildwood Street. Normally don't have a subdivision of one lot, but in this case, they needed to put a small access road to get in to this. Glendale Ave and Osippee Lane was just completed, and we closed that out at our last meeting on June eighth. Over the last three or four months, we haven't not had any approval not required plans, so nothing there. For zoning changes, we've been doing some hearings for zoning changes. One of them was a repeal of a setback from an open stream. If you remember, this originally was to be on the fall town meeting warrant last year, but it was referred to our board with not enough time for us to actually have sufficient public hearing. So that did not go forward in the fall, but it is on the, the spring town meeting, and we had a public hearing actually at our last meeting, March eighth. And that's, we opened the public hearing and closed it that night, and the board is gonna make a recommendation at town meeting on that. Another zoning change, a map amendment for Albion Street. Again, we had a public hearing on March eighth. We closed that off, and we will also be making a recommendation at town meeting for that. We had been discussing some potential zoning changes around the lake, and that is still ongoing, but we've kind of paused that as the master plan is going forward. At this point, there's no real rush up there because a lot of those properties have basically locked in their zoning, so there's really no rush to that. But we, we do know that some changes need to be done up there and have some enhancements that potentially the town can get some benefits, and we can also make sure that we kind of work with the land up there and not overdevelop it if possible. Some of the other items we're working on right now, again, is the master plan. Board worked with Aaron Kokinda to select the advisory group. Twenty-six people are working on that. And again, that's mostly run by the group itself. We do have overs, you know, we will be approving that in the end, but this is all, the master plan is put together by these, this, this group. Our board is not dictating or driving this. We will be in with their virtual meetings they have and some in-person meetings, but again, this is, this is driven by the, the subcommittee that's been put together. We all, what else we're working on are the revisions to the ANR and subdivision rules and regulations. This is gonna be a, a long-term process. There's a lot of tweaks that need to be done in there. And one other thing we're working on is a potential bylaw for street name change procedures. As you know, someone came before the town to rename a street. It was, it was revealed that we once had a bylaw for the procedure for that, but it has at some point been removed from our regulations, so we're working on new ones. What we're doing is we're basically checking other towns to see what they have, and working from that, and we're gonna, at some point, most likely in the fall, is propose a general bylaw for street name changes. And then we, with the multifamily zoning requirement for MBTA communities, once we get a report on that, we may be doing some zoning changes on that. So, basically, that's what the board's been working on right now.
That's a lot. Any questions for? May I, Bill, did you want to add anything?
No, that's good, Matt covered everything we reviewed, the notes, and, yeah, we, it's good to look back on what we've done in a year or so because it's, it's, it does add up. It's, it's, it's good to provide a service to the town and really have a good board like we have. And I do want to note that, I'm very excited about combining some of our boards for, like, the site visit for Stark Ave. That just, just needs to happen more. Thanks.
Absolutely. Council Dobroski?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Lowry and Mr. Spalding, for your work and your report here. I, I'm encouraged to hear your, your comments about the head of the lake. You know, I, I think we all know how important a, a project that is to so many people. I hear about that from many, many residents, and so whatever can be done to make sure that we're minimizing the impact, you know, to the extent you can minimize the impact with a project of that size and scope. But what we can do to, you know, just have that as such a high priority to mitigate wherever possible, I think that would go a long way for residents. I know that, you know, there's a whole process, obviously, that has to be followed, but your insight, along with that of Conservation Commission, I, I think we just, it just continues to be so incredibly influential in helping to make that a better project, you know, for the community, because there's a lot of understandable community concern out there about it. And, and I appreciate you being able to prioritize it that way, because I, I, we need to. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we probably would have been acting quicker if we hadn't started the master planning right now. But at this point, it, it does not really make sense to go forward with, with some zoning change if something comes out of that that would differ from what we've been working on. So we're trying to be sensitive and listen to the townspeople and to letting the process run its course before we, we jump and do anything, so.
Council McLean?
Yes, Mr. Lowry, Mr. Spalding, I attended your last meeting. Congratulations on finishing before midnight. Quite a meeting. It raised something in my mind relative to, not to pick on Stock Ave, but relative to private roads. Are they subject to the same requirement as a public road when, when they're initially constructed? Because I know sometimes, over the course of time, we have problems with private roads, and people come to the town council or town meeting and ask to have the road taken over because things aren't necessarily going so well. Can you, could you give me some insight on that? I mean, does a private road have to conform to the same requirements? Yeah, basically, any road that's constructed now could be accepted by the town. It's built to those standards. It, it's built to last, it's, it's not gonna fall apart, it's not gonna have potholes in two years. So if someone is doing a subdivision and they need to put a new road in, it will be built to town standards, and most of the time, they would be accepted. As you know, the, the land we're working with now and that developers are working with, and what we have left are basically marginal pieces of land that need a lot of work, which is why the, the, the process for doing these subdivisions, the review, can go on for is why the process for doing these subdivisions, the review, can go on for a year and a half or so and involve conservation and sometimes also zoning. But what is constructed is every bit as well-built and designed as any other, you know, road that may not be just a private road. So in this case, for Stark Ave, it would probably be, it would probably stay a private road because of the width and the type of drainage issues in the way it's going to be handled up there, so.
Good to know and appreciated your comments on specificity of plans because specificity is a good thing.
I think so.
Yeah. One other thing that surprised me a bit, and I claim ignorance here, is that the zoning could be locked in for the number of years that I had seen reported relative to future projects. But I was just curious, you probably have more knowledge than I do on this. Is that a one-time deal? Can it be re-upped X amount of years later? You know, must something be built within a period of time or it expires? How does that work, if you know?
Yeah, there is a timeframe, so you cannot re-up it at that point. So basically, as far as I know, you'd have to comply with the zoning requirements at that point when it expired, so.
Okay, so if there are ever any zoning changes, they would probably be effective if something wasn't built before the expiration?
Correct. So if we have a new zoning overlay district or a complete zoning change up there, those parcels that had not been locked in would comply. The others would have to wait until, if they did not act in the timeframe, they would revert to the new zoning, so.
Thank you very much for those answers. Appreciate it.
Counselor Danny?
Hi, thank you for being here. So I just have a question for you. Is there anything that the town council can be doing to support the work that you do? We know that you do a lot and the challenges are great, but is there anything that, you know, that we could be doing to help you?
I would say any support at town meeting when, if we have a hearing on something. We do put a lot of work into public hearings and it is a little frustrating if we do what we believe is a lot of work into something and then it gets to town meeting and no one speaks up on behalf of it or supports the decision or the rationale we use to come up with a favorable recommendation. And it gets voted down, that's frustrating, so. And we know there's one parcel up on North Ave that is really, it's really disappointing that we had a good zoning change. We thought it was going to benefit the town and it was voted down. And it's, now we're getting something that a lot of us saw that was a potential, but when you get to town meeting, different, different people prevail, so.
Thank you.
Bill, I don't know if you have anything?
Yeah, I actually do have something to add and thank you for asking the question. I really feel Erin Kokinda's position has been so awesome for our board. The amount of communication, the website, the presence has really improved. I also feel that with our meetings being remote, and Mr. Mayo knows I've been sending a few messages here and there over the last year, but I really would like the town and the counselors to push for somehow hybrid meetings where we do have accessibility for all, meaning right now, if you do not have computer access or a strong internet connection, you can't join a meeting. And I feel people could walk to town hall and join a meeting. And maybe the opportunity to have audiovisual system that will allow for both. And I think that's in the works, but I just wanted to bring that up as a comment. Thanks.
It's a great suggestion.
That's fascinating, yeah.
Really good point. Thank you.
And so is, I just have, is Erin, so Erin is kind of, is assigned to the planning board and she's really helping you, okay, so helping you out with that. Do you get a lot of inquiries just via Erin or via email on projects or do most people come to your meetings, kind of to your point, Bill? Like, how are they communicating with you?
Most, well, Matt has taken over his chair, as you know, elected to report. And a lot of comments come through the Wakefield Planning Board email. So that's something that Erin and Matt have access to. So those letters, I have to, I have to say, those letters have been incredibly helpful as a board member to, they distributed to the board and they help us. And some of them are written with so much research and care and passion for our town that it helps. So that's one method and I know Matt can probably share more experience with that.
Yeah, the, one of the only issues with that is we get people that ask questions to the planning board and unfortunately, the planning board cannot respond. So it would be nice if we could have some dialogue, but it gets tough because I'm not going to respond on behalf of the board. That would not be fair because I must speak, I don't speak on behalf of the board. I'm just one member on there. So typically, Erin would answer a lot of those with consultation with me or others, but I try not to respond and I know people get upset, but that's, you know, we're a board here, we're not, I'm not in charge of the planning board, so it needs to, it needs to come through all of us. And it's difficult, it's difficult for us to, you know, post a letter, an email and have everyone talk about it and then respond. So unfortunately, I know people get frustrated that we don't respond, but it's the nature of the board, so. And yeah, and Erin does a great job. At times, she does not have a lot to do with the planning board issues, but at other times, when there's filings going on and plans are coming in, she's swamped. So it's just the nature of planning in a small town that's basically built up, so.
Well said. I know, Mike, you have your hand up. Does anybody else want to, Counselor Chines?
I just wanted to quickly, you know, thank both of you, Mr. Lowery and Mr. Spalding and the other three members of the planning board. I mean, you guys have done a lot in the year. I think, Bill, you said that, you know, when you kind of list out everything that you've worked on, it's pretty significant. But one of the things that I've appreciated is that, you know, you've taken the time to look at some issues proactively, whether it was the lake zoning issue, which I think makes perfect sense to kind of put that work on hold pending the master plan, but I certainly don't think that the time that was spent on that was wasted by any stretch of the imagination. And then also looking at sort of the subdivision regs and the A and R zoning bylaws to figure out what we need to change there. You know, even as you're sort of responding to projects that are coming in and hearings that you have to schedule, the fact that you've carved out that time to kind of look ahead and think strategically, I think, is really important. So thank you for that and for both of you and your colleagues and your leadership on these issues.
Thank you. We've got, we've got a great team. Everyone on the board right now is very insightful and I think when it's time for me to not run again, I'll be, the board will be in good hands and the town.
I'm sorry, I can't, you have to, I'm interrupting.
You tried that once, I think, already.
I did, yes.
Counselor McLean, go ahead.
Do you gentlemen have, I know there's been discussion in town and in the town council meetings relative to whether a town planner would be something we could do on a budgetary basis, but leaving the budget aside, do you have an opinion as to whether the town should hire a town planner?
Yeah, I have an opinion. I really don't think we need to have a full-time planner, to tell you the truth. I think a part-time position may be shared with some other towns in our same position that there's not a lot of land, but when these issues do come up, you need to have someone who's specialized in that. That would be helpful, but I just don't know if there's really the need to have a full-time planner. Erin is doing a great job. The position has changed from more of a planner to a budget writer, a, you know, a grant seeker, something like that, and more of an economic development position. So me personally, I don't think there's a need for a full-time planner.
And if I could, Matt, I feel the same way, as you know, we've discussed this and not speaking for the board, but I do feel our town could use a town planner at a capacity, as Matt mentioned, but to also tie in our boards. Erin has been working in such a, without support, I guess, is the way, the right way. I mean, she could have an intern, she could have somebody that has a few years' experience that could work with her. But I feel if we did have a town planner, one of the main roles that could be for that planner would be to help tie our boards together, meaning ZBA, Conservation, the Planning Board and a few others, to really help that communication and that person that's involved with all the meetings so they can really help us make better decisions knowing what other boards are doing. Right now, I feel that's lacking and I'm not sure what the solution is, but maybe that's something a town planner could do to allow Erin to do more economic development, which I know she loves to do and we desperately need.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, and it was kind of a unique situation this year that unfortunately, because of a couple elections and elections usually end up falling on Tuesday, that it's really kind of messed up our schedule to the point where we had public hearings already advertised, but an election popped up in between there. So we had to scramble to basically re-notice some items. It's really, you know, we all have calendars. Erin actually took it personally that she missed it and I said, you know, we all look at this, she's just pretty busy. So that would be something that a town, you know, a part-time planner could look and plan those situations out a little bit better, so.
Counselor Danny?
So, Bill, would you say a part-time, would you be in favor of a part-time or full-time planner?
Good question and I'm not sure. I'd have to, I don't know, I think Erin could answer that better with what she has on her plate and what she maybe has a backlog. And we've had great help from Susan Alder, our clerk. She's been wonderful at helping and supporting that and delivering plans. But it doesn't seem like it needs to be a full-time position right now with what we need, but I'm not sure what the full scope of what Erin has on a backlog, like I mentioned. So I could see it being expanded more, you know?
Thank you.
Good question. Thanks.
I guess one of the things you'd have to consider is exactly what the town planner would be doing. Because if you look at, and I know I've heard a lot, I've seen on social media that, you know, we need a town planner to stop excessive growth or to, you know, have a project come out differently. There's no, there's no reason for a development to go through a town planner if there's already a ZBA process outlined. So just because you have a town planner, it doesn't mean that someone who's proposing something is necessarily going to go to the town planner first because there's already established process. So if you're going to have a town planner and they're going to be involved with that, you kind of need to put that into the process that if you're going to, if you're going to bring a development before town, you need to go to the town planner first, consult them and then move forward. But unless that's actually specified, you're not going to have people that do that and I don't think you can get the results from the town planner position that you thought you might.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you. This is more just thinking out loud, Matt, based on what you just said, but, you know, one of the questions then would be from a process standpoint and, you know, is that something that requires sort of a bylaw change in terms of how we approach development or is it a suggested process change that we would make as part of a, you know, here's how to approach a development in Wakefield? Obviously, if it's a suggested process change, it's not binding. And so again, just as we think about the role and responsibilities for a potential town planner role, which I know we've got a subcommittee looking at, you know, it raises a really interesting question about that component of it and how does that play out in terms of what we're able to do under our current bylaws in town? Fortunately, we have a town council here.
What some communities do is they include in their.
Zoning bylaws, a provision that encourages people to go to some kind of informal planning session where various departments review the proposal and discuss it. And you can't make this something that is required because that would be, that would go beyond what, you know, the Zoning Enabling Act and the Subdivision Control Act require, but you can make it strongly encouraged and it kind of guides people in the right direction.
Now, thank you. That's really helpful. Again, just something to think about as we think about the job description if we do go in this direction.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think one of the things that I'm hearing so far, again, with these two groups, and I'm sure the ZBA probably has a similar feeling, is that there has been, to some degree, maybe a feeling of too much siloing and each, you know, each board or commission has kind of felt too independent without enough collaboration necessarily. And I think some of it is inherently because of the nature of what their, each of their charges happens to be, but I'm kind of thinking through and I don't know, Mr. Mullin, if this is the right approach, but take, for example, the dark skies compliant piece that came up a little bit earlier. It would seem like having some sort of a group together, representation from ZBA, from Planning Board, from Conservation Commission, from Environmental Sustainability, from X, you know, whatever that other, you know, group or groups might be. And maybe say, for example, put it together, a task force on that where they approach this issue of dark skies compliant and then we get the various, I'll call them disciplines, together to then maybe issue, say, the best practices to share, Sniff Galton's point, some sort of better guidance, you know, that can, again, not be necessarily even binding, but of a more strongly suggested nature. Would the best vehicle for that, Mr. Mullin, be establishing a task force where you bring together representatives from each of the different boards or commissions?
Yeah, I think so. I don't know that you'd necessarily want to go to town meeting about that. It's probably something best hatched out in a smaller group like the town council. I mean, you could, you could certainly appoint such a group yourselves.
I'm inclined, and again, not to be this bad tonight, but, you know, I'm inclined to at least do that with, say, starting with dark skies, you know, as the first issue that we bring together, task force, and try that out and see, you know, if that ends up with, you know, the issuance of kind of like better practices or guidelines going forward. And then maybe we, you know, use that same structure, I think similar to what Mr. Mullin was describing, you know, to have a more informal way of doing, you know, an assessment of a proposed project, looking at it from the different, you know, disciplines or different perspectives. I think that's probably a good practice for us to begin and I think the dark skies case of it might be a good starting point for it and then see where it brings us. But I suspect that the more we can end up with best practices, you know, the better projects we're going to end up with. So just a thought, perhaps we could put it on, Madam Chair, for a future agenda, but I'd like to be able to see that in practice.
Yeah, I think it's something a lot of people are thinking about, how to just make these connections. Okay, anything else for planning board? No? Thanks for spending so much time with us and for sharing all you're doing and for everything you're doing to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next up, we have Zoning Board of Appeals, and we have Amy Wall here in studio. Thanks for sticking with us. It's nice to see people in person.
Right.
And I'm sure we probably, Mr. Hatfield, Dave Hatfield?
Yeah, he has a presentation.
Dave Hatfield is coming over, a board member. Gregory McIntosh is coming over, and also a board member, Joe Pride.
Excellent.
And WCET, Dave Hatfield is going to need access to screen share.
Good evening.
Hi, Dave.
Right.
Yes.
Yes, we can.
All right. I'll dare to be different, I'm a slides guy, I like to have my talking points in front of me.
Just make sure you send them to us.
I will, I will, absolutely. Should be no surprise, yeah, just good stuff, hopefully. But just to piggyback on the previous discussion, just maybe while it's fresh, I just want to also add to Erin's participation with our board and some other things she's doing that, again, I think in the past, we've worked with the town planner on, and that is when we took on the Crescent Commons project, the 40B project, we applied to MHP for a consultant, and there's a process for that. And again, she was very helpful in getting that done, and we got someone in that we thought was very valuable to helping us with that project. The other thing is tracking our subsidized housing numbers for the town. I know Paul Rivas used to do that, and it's just, I don't know how many hours it takes just to keep up with all the projects. They come on and off the list depending on their status and when they pull permits, when they're approved, when they file with the state, and then the census changes the goalposts a little bit. So keeping up with all the projects and all the housing numbers, it probably is a part-time job in and of itself, right? So that we have the latest numbers to process with new applications that come along and any potential safe harbors that we could apply. So I just want to, you know, she's done a wonderful job stepping in and helping us with that, and she just presented to us a couple meetings ago, when we were anticipating starting a new project and wanted to have the latest numbers in front of us, right? So I just want to trumpet her expertise and her willingness to help us in these areas, and I would just add to that, whether that could be a town planner kind of role or continue to be something she does, just more for your consideration, I guess. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Cool, thanks. Okay, so our updates. So again, we were here in October, so I'll be brief, and not as many projects to review, but, and I'll keep this slide up again, it's just a reminder, I think you all know when zoning came into being, but for any members of the public, you know, who may not be aware, as a reminder. And the board hears different types of applications, they could be appeals from the building inspector, special permit variances or findings. A lot of the homes in town and properties predate the zoning, so someone wants to make a change to their property, they typically need a finding by our board to look at what they're trying to change. And you've been talking about zoning bylaw amendments and how they go through the Planning Board and are typically approved by a two-thirds supermajority at town meeting. I added this other bullet, because this is new information that's sort of come along and on our radar now, is this housing choice legislation that's been spoken of. And it does allow that some changes could be approved by a simple majority, and I think it also contemplates that special permits granted by our board could actually be made by a simple majority instead of four to one, the supermajority that we currently apply, again, if certain criteria met, certain types of projects. So I know Steve Mayo and Erin are working on this and look forward to hearing what those changes might mean to our town and future projects. So activity since we were last here before you in October of 2021, our board has deliberated or is currently deliberating on 23 applications, and they continue to range from variances, special permits, and findings and determinations. And I'll summarize some key ones on the next couple of slides. So the Savings Bank needed a special permit, some findings related to their bank expansion. This also went back to some zoning changes that supported what they were trying to do, and so that was done. 611 Salem Street, Elite Framing, Elite Metal Framing and Construction needed a special permit and a variance related to their commercial office building. 103 Albion, the Hobby Bunker, needed a special permit for a projecting bracket sign. We continue to get these, we've gotten a few of these bracket signs, especially on Albion, to help with foot traffic and visibility for their business, and I think they've been a welcome addition in that area. 44 to 48 Crescent, as mentioned, I think everyone's well aware of this 40B that was proposed as 56 units originally and was reduced to 40 in the end. I've got a few follow-up slides, I wanted to sort of highlight this project for your council tonight, and so I'll talk to that in a moment. We continue to get wireless communication facility upgrades, those are administrative findings that we make now with some bylaw changes that have been enacted. So if they're not adding a new pole or doing any new installations, but just upgrading the facilities, we typically get, they want to change from 4G to 5G or whatever, or new technology, we make administrative findings based on some plans they submit, so we've done a couple of these in the last quarter or so. And again, continue to see residential projects as well. People want to stay in their town, they want to stay in their homes, and in some cases, they want to add family members to their homes, and so they need an accessory apartment permit. They want to add on to their homes, renovate or add on, and they may need a variance or a finding, as I mentioned earlier. And then some are conversions in legality, you know, some properties might legally be a two-family, or they run it, it's been used as a three, but the town, for whatever reason, maybe only considers it a two or something, and so we would have to review a request to formally recognize them. There's a certain number of dwelling units, maybe it cleans up title issues, again, if they're looking to sell, that type of thing, and we've done one or two of those. So what's ongoing? So I think everyone knows all about these. 200 to 400 Quanapower Parkway, proposed multifamily mixed-use with 485 units and three buildings. It originally came in last year with those 485 and a relatively small mixed-use component. Since that time, through deliberations with the board and other town agents and the butters and so forth, and working with the applicant, it's now down to 440 units, still a lot, but it has come down. But it also increased the mixed-use component, that potential restaurant or cafe, that space, they've allocated more space to that, and as part of that and other reasons, the unit count has come down. So we continue to work on that, we've made a lot of progress, but we're not done, still working on that one. 97 to 99 Water, this is actually, if you're not familiar with the property, on the corner of Wakefield Ave, across from that substation. It's a small white building, and the proposal is for multifamily mixed-use, originally proposed five units, it's now down to four, in two stories, with a mixed-use retail component at the bottom, much like the rest of that block is. You see those three stories with retail, commercial, and on the ground floor, and some apartments above, and this would be consistent with that. We're almost done with this, this had a drain line that ran underneath the property, and I think working with the town, they're just trying to finalize, I think, some language to obviously move that around the building instead of leaving it there, leaving a drain that might need future service under a brand-new building. So working with the Engineering Department, DVW, they're working that around the plan and just finalize, I think, some language to legalize it, make it all tight. So we're close to the end on this one. And of course, 596 North, as Matt alluded to, the zoning changes that did not take place at town meeting has now resulted in this 40B application that we've opened at our last hearing on March 9. It is proposed multifamily with 38 units and four stories. It appears to be similar in size and scope at its initial presentation as the two buildings next door on North Ave, but we, again, just started last week, they gave an initial presentation, and we've got a long way to go with this one. We are in the process of working with Erin, actually, we've drafted an application to apply again to MHP for a consultant to perhaps work with us on this one. The unique part about this one, of course, is that it butts this property wetlands, so I'm sure there'll be conversations with the Conservation Commission on this one, potentially an opportunity to work together in some capacity, and perhaps with the MHP consultant, if they have some normally zoning experience, 40B experience, but maybe some conservation experience, again, with projects they've done, that might lend some unique experience to this one and help us navigate this 40B. And then we've got a couple of residential projects, again, people at these two addresses on Vernon Street and Mansfield Drive, looking at accessory apartments, they require a special permit. Usually, these are typically done in one evening, but there was some additional information the board needed and was looking for from them, so these are continued, and we'll see them in a future hearing. Okay, Crescent Commons. So I want to spend a couple of slides on this one. Obviously, very visible project, very well-publicized project. This comprehensive permit 40B application came to us last year, February 10th it was opened. It ran over a year, a little over a year, as you can see, we closed the public hearing and approved this comprehensive permit on March 2. We engaged that MHP consultant, as were Glenn, as I mentioned, he was very helpful for our deliberations, especially in the subcommittee, we formally had a subcommittee with this project. So over the course of that year plus, we had 12 full board hearings on this project, plus 16 subcommittee hearings with the applicant team, their engineers, Jim McBane, Amy Wall, and a couple meetings Amy was unable to attend, Joe Pride stepped in to participate and represent the board, so we had two members there, as well as the MHP consultant, and various town reps at different meetings. So I can't even calculate the hundreds of person hours that took place, not only with these subcommittee hearings, over the course of a year, to work on the minutia and the detail and trying to shape this project and work with the applicant to try to make it, find some common ground and find some compromise and make it the best we possibly could for the neighborhood and the town, and then bringing all of those updates to these full board hearings when they had updates to share. And in the end, you know, we received input from that subcommittee, as well as from the different engineering departments, the fire and police chief, traffic, the neighbors, of course, and all the members of the board. So as I said, it started out at 56 units and four-plus stories, I've got a couple of pictures on the slides that follow, just to give you a visual. What was approved was 40 units and three-plus stories. Again, it's not a full story, but you'll see how we've come up with something that we think helps, you know, improve the appearance of it and fit better in the neighborhood. Regarding parking, this was something that came up very often with the butters concerned about traffic overflow, parking on the streets and so forth, especially the property is on three lots that abut Crescent Hill, a small dead-end street. In the end, we ended up with a project that reduced its units, increased the parking capacity that meets zoning requirements. And as part of that includes 10 visitor spots that are designated in perpetuity, so they will always have designated visitor spots to help mitigate, you know, the parking potential issue on the streets, surrounding streets. So that was a good win, we thought, to help there, as well as some commitments on the part of the applicant. $25,000 will be given to the town for area improvements, that could be traffic, roadway, whatever's deemed needed, perhaps in this area, from the Engineering Department, DVW, what have you, and kudos to Bill Renaud and his team to help us spearhead this and get this part of the plan, as well as three street trees. We'd like them on Crescent Street in front of the project when it's all done, but if for some reason they don't fit there, they'll be used at the discretion of the town somewhere else, as well as a crosswalk. There'll be a crosswalk on Crescent to benefit the neighbors, right, from this property. I think it's designated to be right across, take people across Crescent right in front of the property. Okay? So again, a lot of work went into this by the board and all the people you see here and the representatives from the town over the course of a year. So even though this is a 40B, and typically 40Bs can bypass local zoning in favor of creating this affordable housing, the amount of time that went into this project and the scrutiny and the care that went into it from all of these representatives to try to get something that we thought would be the best possible thing for the town and the neighborhood, we think we achieved that, and we hope it will turn out that way when it's all set and done and built. So some pictures. So this is what was presented to us, you can see the date on this, it's from January of 2021, but this was the initial picture of it, and you can see that this is from Crescent, under parking underneath there on the lower level, and then four full stories plus the roof. Not a lot of good, you know, architecture, if you will, a lot of flat sort of design. Yeah, it wasn't well-received, I would say, by the board and probably the butters, too, I think, the initial reaction. So this is what we started with, and this is what we ended up with on this slide. So you can see, it's a much softer look, the materials, the color, the way the facade is broken up architecturally, and, you know, kudos to Jim McBane, I think is our resident expert in architecture and leading the charge here, I think, with the others. To scale this down and the use of mansard roosts there to help soften the facade, I think that kind of style is consistent with what we see in town, so it's more in fitting with the neighborhood and the town. So I think in the end, you can see it's now like three and a half stories, that four-story doesn't fill the full width and area of the project, it's only in parts, and that in part, again, was the reduction of units from 56 down to 40. And this is the side view from Crescent Hill, just to give you another perspective. On the side view, you can see it's not a full four-story, you see the entrance there on Crescent Hill, that'd be the upper garage, only for residents, the visitor is on the lower end, the lower garage that enters only from Crescent Street. But again, it's just the use of the colors and textures and roofing to soften and bring the whole scale of it down, more fitting in the neighborhood. And that's it, I just wanted to highlight this particular project with all the attention it got, and that is my last slide. Open to any questions.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chair Hatfield, for this. This has been, I think, very helpful, and I know, a lot of us know that your meetings often run very late, and there's a lot of work that's not seen other at the meeting or Zoom, where you're onsite looking at properties, you know, and the rest, so I will be the first to say that I am fully supportive of the commitment that each member of the ZBA makes, there's no question about that. One question I had for you on, just kind of like, and this is not specific to a project, but just in general, my understanding is that when developers are coming to town and initially submitting plans, they're obviously, you know, motivated by profit, and so they're looking to enjoy as high a return on their investment as they can by fitting as many units as possible on a parcel and, you know, trying to get as many approved as possible. In your, I know you've been in this three years now, in your experience, is that, is it generally the starting point where they're going to submit a proposal that has way too many units, and then you guys have to, within the authority you have, you know, try to reduce those down as best you can to make them more to scale? Because I think Crescent Commons is one example of that, you know, but is that something that you're seeing on the regular? Is that almost like a standard operating procedure for most of things that come to me for you?
Well, I wouldn't want to pretend to speak to all the applicants and the developers who come before us and their motivations, but I would say that that is certainly possible. I can say that probably, without hesitation, just about every project that comes to us ends up being few units then, when it started out, and hopefully a better design. But in terms of just number of units, I would say they almost always end up with fewer. Whether it's just it makes sense, or we're just making trade-offs with design, or to ensure there's enough parking, and one way to do that, if there's just limited space for parking, is to reduce the units so the ratio's right. So for any number of reasons, they get reduced. But what their original motivations were, come in with as much as they can, perhaps, you know, their motive is to build something and make money. But again, it's hard for us to speak to their motives necessarily.
And then in terms of, I know you got, everyone in the ZBA is really, you're working within the parameters of the bylaws, I understand that, and so you have, you have your, you call it a playbook, if you will, in terms of, you know, what you're able to do. How does the ZBA, just kind of as a body, prioritize the things that, you know, that are your top priorities generally? Is it project-specific, or are there the general guiding principles where height is a concern, or density is a concern, you know, like, how do you guys arrive at that, since I know you take so many, so much of your time is on a project-by-project basis? How do you kind of arrive at the kind of the big-picture principles that you then end up applying?
So I would say we almost always, especially with these larger projects, almost always start with the amassing and architecture, the density, the number of units. We almost always start there because it's the most visible aspect, and, you know, it is project-specific. And, you know, it is project-specific, you know, how much time we might spend in those areas, but I think that's the biggest thing. It's just, you know, what's the overall mass of the thing? The height, the number of units, how much square footage it's going to cover on the site? We've actually had a couple that have been withdrawn. They fly under the radar probably more so than the stuff that gets approved and gets more attention. But we've had a couple that are withdrawn because they just, they just weren't right, the right fit. They were going to cover too much space on the property, or they just were just not a good fit. And I think the developer just chose to withdraw and maybe do something else down the line. But we almost always start with that massing and height and density. And then we may just get to a certain point and pause it because we want to hear the other aspects. What does traffic say about traffic and parking aspects? You know, that becomes an important component, especially where some of these projects around the transit, you know, that had been covered by those zoning changes in 2015. Traffic has been a huge thing. So we'll say, well, let's pause that discussion and come back after we hear from the TAC and get any recommendations about what the traffic flows might be and things we might have to change in the project, we might have to scale it down further. But I would say that's the big one. And I would say anything that, where they might need relief to do what they want to do. So right off the bat, we'll know based on what they're presenting. If it's height, then we're going to focus on height. If it's density, we're going to focus on that. If it's some other relief that we would maybe have the discretion to grant if we thought it was good for the project or the neighborhood or the town. But anything where they, we might question, we're going to focus on those aspects. We'll prioritize them ahead of, before we get to landscaping and signage and lighting and some other aspects that maybe, you know, always get considered, but maybe further down the line.
And just finally, I know that one of the frustrations that has been expressed by residents in terms of public hearings over the years, and this is pre-COVID, is that, you know, they would often be continued. It would be, and so, you know, some residents felt as if it was almost, I'll call it a game by the developers to just, you continue things and kind of wear people down, basically, if you will. Now, since you guys had, have moved on to the, onto Zoom, have you noticed a discernible difference in terms of the level of public engagement at public hearings, since people can more easily, you know, attend them online?
I would say that, I mean, there's more, I've noticed more people in the Zoom calls than would physically fit in the town hall meeting room. But for those who were in the meeting room, they were, when it was time to speak, we got, we got some good commentary and feedback at most meetings. So I wouldn't say that necessarily has significantly changed going to Zoom, but just more people. You know, we might see 30, 40 people at meetings, especially when we're talking about some of these bigger projects that you just, we just didn't see when we were just in the room. And we, too, would look forward to some future hybrid situation, as mentioned on the previous. You know, we kind of miss, or at least some of us, I do, kind of miss being in the room and the face-to-face contact with everybody, but...
But having that additional engagement, I think, is a very good thing, you know, having more people in attendance, sounds like a very, a very good thing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Agreed.
And again, thank you for your work.
Thanks, Ann.
Any additional, like, oh, I'm sorry, it's hard to see the yellow on you. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Hatfield, for the presentation. Couple of questions. Do you coordinate with Erin Kokinda with the list, or does she keep the list? I'm just wondering who keeps the list?
She keeps the list, and she updates us periodically. But she's the keeper of the list, yep.
Okay, I don't think she's on now. I did notice a potential building missing that, which is actually just down the hill from both of our houses.
Which address?
30 Cedar Street. It's owned by the same owner as 100 Chestnut, unless it's buried in another category, but I don't think it is. And it was also renovated and similar use.
Okay, okay.
Within a year, within a year of 100 Chestnut. So it probably could be on the list. I'm curious about, you know, the paper had indicated that the Crescent project involved a special program, and we got 100% credit for the units. Could you explain how that works? What's special about that program? Or was that the involvement of the consultant that helped that, or how does it work?
So, being a 40B project, 25% of the units are allocated to the subsidized housing count. But if it's a rental, instead of ownership, you get to count 100% against your subsidized housing stock. So, and there's been a mix in town. I would say more of the recent projects have been rented, so that's actually benefited the town in that sense. Whether people prefer ownership versus rental, I think there's pros and cons of both with these types of projects. But the rental of a 40B gives us 100% of those units to count towards the subsidized housing inventory.
Do we know whether the proposal for 596 North is going to be for rentals?
I believe they proposed it as rental initially.
So that could be one where we get 100% count?
Right. Originally, at 38, will, remains to be seen how many it ends up being at the end. We'll see.
Right. When the other North Ave projects came in, I assume one of their pitches may have been to you folks that, you know, this will help with transit because we're close to the bus stop. Was that something that you heard?
I believe so, yep. And we're supposed to get sidewalks out of that, too, to facilitate pedestrian traffic down that side of the street.
That was going to be my next question.
Okay. So it had a conversation already with Bill Renaud, I don't know if Bill's still on. He's aware of it, too. It was on the plans. It's supposed to be there for both projects. After the first project, they said, once we knew the second one was coming by the same developer, they said, well, let's just wait till they're both done and we'll work, you know, plan the sidewalk in coordination with the town across both properties. Now we've got 596 North, and one of the first things we mentioned in our initial commentary was, because they brought up sidewalks being out front, is maybe when it's all said and done, we run them, you know, across all three in coordination with the town. But those aren't 40Bs. Those were just regular multi-use, and those had inclusionary zoning, I mean affordability at 18%. You know, 18% of those units are considered affordable.
Right. Does the Department of Housing and Community Development, do they, do they want you to get to 25 usually? Is that a benchmark that they're looking for on some of the ones where we have 18, or is it not worked that way?
Our bylaws stipulate there has to be at least 18%, you know, inclusionary. So we make sure they have that. There've been rare occasions where we've negotiated something with a developer, trading off some aspects, and let them go a little below that by a unit or two. But by and large, the vast majority are either at that 18% or, in the case of, you know, 40Bs, they're counted either at that 25% rate, or if they're rental, at 100%.
Yeah.
If we, you know, right now, because we just had Erin at the meeting, we're like, officially by the state, we're at 6.7, 6.8%, right? And we all thought we'd be higher. Well, if everything we've approved over the last couple of years made it through the approval process and were counted by the state, because there's paperwork that has to be filed and they have to pull building permits and things have to be done, there's criteria to be met, to be counted. And if they don't pull permits for a while, like Tarrant Lane and Crescent, I mean Greenwood Station didn't, they come off the list, right? So there's always these moving targets. But if everything we've approved were to be counted against our current housing inventory, we would be just about at 10%, according to Erin.
Right.
But that was based on the 2010 census. Now, when they come out the 2020 census, the goalposts move. We don't know by how much, right? That remains to be seen. But all we can do is, you know, work on these projects individually and see where they end up, you know, in the end, on the formula, but...
Yeah, but those sidewalks that you mentioned, those are actually on the books with those owners that they're going to be done at some point?
Yes, they're on the plans.
That's great. The other thing I was wondering was, I mean, I assume you've looked at this 48. It seems to work contrary to 40B if they're all market units. We're going to be adding market rate units.
I'm sorry, was that a question? I missed.
Yeah. Have you looked at 48? I mean, I was talking to Steve about that a little bit, and it kind of looks like it might go against us on 40B because those are not 40B units.
I have not, I have not.
Okay, yeah. So you're thinking also possibly getting a consultant on the other North Ave project?
Yeah, we'd very much like, again, maybe someone with not only the 40B experience, but with conservation of wetlands, because we know that's going to be part of the conversation, so.
Are you thinking after that project that maybe with three buildings over there, that maybe it's time for either a crosswalk or maybe even, nobody, we all like the straight shot to the stores and to the highway, but maybe at some point even a pedestrian-activated red? Is that a possibility?
I think crosswalk was brought up already at the first, again, we'll wait to see what Traffic Advisory Committee recommends, but I would agree that something is warranted somewhere in that stretch. Absolutely.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I've got to ask you, because I just don't know the answer to this. Do we have a height requirement in our zoning in Wakefield?
We absolutely do, and it varies depending on the district, yep.
Oh, depending on...
There's a zoning table, there's a zoning table in there, Table 2, under dimensional, it's in 19034. I know you can see them online, but it varies depending on the, like, residential's 35 feet, business, I think, is 50 or 60. So there are height requirements for each district.
So the height of the building down where my wife used to work at Harvard Mills, that was within, what, that special permit district?
That, I think, was either, I think it either met the height or, I can't remember exactly the number. What's that, Amy?
It exceeded it. That was, I think it was varied for the height.
Yeah. I don't remember the exact height, but it may have exceeded it.
I think it's 83.
Well, thanks for your presentation and thanks for the information. Be interesting to see what happens with this 48. It looks like it's going to be interesting. Another thing I'd ask you folks to talk into with your expertise is, relative to the 48, might we get some credit for what we've already done? I think, you know, Steve's initial thought process was, we may not, because it's a special permit district. But to me, generally, that would seem to be kind of unfair, because we have done a lot around the train tracks. But anyway, you know, from what I'm reading with the regulations, they say that they want to hear from us and they're willing to work with us. So hopefully, we can all work with them and, you know, come up with some reasonable results.
I'll look forward to it as well. All right, Mike, thanks.
Counselor Danny?
Super fast, I just, to Amy and David and any other members here, thank you for the attention to detail and the meticulousness you're looking at these projects. I mean, it is amazing. We kind of work hard, not even close to what you people do. You know, well, some of us might work harder than others. But I'm talking about, you know, the hearings you're holding and time after time is just so impressive. And I'm just, I've always thought you've done a great job working within the laws that you have to, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. And I gladly accept, I know Greg, Joe, Amy are here, I don't know if anyone else has dialed in, but on behalf of the board, I mean, it's definitely a team effort. Everyone brings something different to the table and contributes on every project, so it's definitely a team effort here. Appreciate the sentiment. Thanks, Ann.
Hi, thank you for being here. This is really informative. And anybody can answer this question, all of you can answer this question, but as the planning board, is there something that the town council can be doing to helping to support your efforts in terms of helping you to do your job and things that we can guide you? I mean, I know that we have no say in any of the zoning laws in this town or the zoning decisions that are made, but are there things that we could provide that would be helpful to you?
Oh, you absolutely could have a say in zoning bylaws. So I would say...
Well, the zoning bylaws, but in the individual decisions.
No, I know. Right, individual decisions, yes. But, so, I would say, continuing to support the master plan and get that updated, as well as the related housing production plan that I think expired in 2020. Perhaps spearheading, it's my understanding that the last zoning, I mean, the last bylaw review committee did not include zoning, Chapter 190 at all.
No, correct. It's been 20 years, I think.
Yeah.
So I would say, and we've had various zoning changes over the years for, you know, individual, specific paragraphs and certain things. But I would say a comprehensive review of the bylaws is warranted and needed. We see language in there that is either things are, you know, two paragraphs conflict in some way, or there's stuff that could be left open to interpretation, or it's ambiguous. And we've interpreted as best as what we think is right or, you know, based on each project and our experience on the board. But I think a formal review of all the bylaws, and that could come out with some changes that, on their own, or some things that are consistent with the updated master plan, to support the master plan. And, you know, zoning changes, the reason I joked and said you absolutely could is because anyone can submit a zoning change, right? Butters with 10, you know, members of the public with 10 signatures, your board, our board, the planning board, like, we could all propose something if we felt it was important enough to do. So if, like the one that went in in 2015, I think spearheaded by a town planner, you know, if things have changed and we said, eh, okay, you know, maybe we'd like to do something different, then spearhead a change to change the bylaw, change the tools in the toolbox, as Ed said. You know, change the tools a little bit, and that'll affect the type of projects that get applied for and the rules we have to apply to the criteria. So that would be huge.
Awesome. Anybody else?
Well, just to piggyback off of what Dave said, having the, I'm trying to forget the, I'm forgetting the word I was going to say, sorry. The, having the bylaws that are looked at, it's very helpful to us because a lot of times, you know, you saw the amount of work we put in just on that one project, and we have 100 in a year, if not more. That a lot of times, people come late to the game, they come to the last meeting, they come to different things, and they want to complain about what we've done, you know, and our hands are tied to a certain extent on certain things, and that's because of the zoning bylaws. So I guess maybe just encourage if people are coming to you folks with issues that maybe it's something that can be worked together, that it's something that a change could happen because we can't, we can't say no to everything because we just can't. It's not how it works, but I think that would be helpful.
Good. And I'm going to ask you this question that Mike McLean had asked. What is your view in terms of would a town planner help you?
So I would, I would probably echo what I stated upfront about, again, tracking the SHI stuff, you know, helping to shape or work on the master plan and then, you know, recommend zoning changes, working out what changes would be relevant and worthwhile. Again, I thought a lot of that came through our previous town planner. And again, I don't know that that's necessarily Erin's charge, or if she's interested in participating in that kind of stuff. But I would say that kind of thing, working with the planning board, working with the relevant agents to propose certain changes to the zoning bylaws. And again, tracking the SHI numbers has got to be a part-time job in and of itself. So I would say, again, again, unless Erin really wants to keep doing it.
She's pretty busy.
The town planner could potentially pick up again. And I would agree, it could be, it may not be, need to be a full-time job, I would agree with that. I know there are some agents we've had in town that share with Melrose or Reading, you know, there's some jobs, and maybe the town planner could be another one like that if we could find someone who could serve multiple communities.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you. And first of all, thank you, Mr. Hatfield, and everyone on the ZBA who's here and who's not here. I think I echo what everyone says, not only about the hours that you put in to review these and the thoroughness of the level of detail, but also just the complexity of, you know, the complexity of what we're really doing.
You know what, I think maybe they froze.
Oh.
It's taken awful quiet.
We froze?
We froze.
Oh, yeah, they're not moving.
Oh, yeah. We're not moving. Ryan gave us one. Yeah, we're not moving.
I'll start again at some point.
Write it down.
You get to hear it twice.
There's a sign, as opposed to the 10 of 10?
Yep. I was going to say, we're competing in our meetings as long as theirs.
It's the whole town council there.
You silenced everyone.
Nice.
It's very funny to see us frozen.
That's why I stayed home.
Oh, I think we're back.
Okay.
Start over again, John.
Well, so again, sorry about that. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you guys do, both the time that you spend, as Counselor Santos mentioned, the attention to detail, and also the complexity of what you're dealing with. And I want to highlight that point, you know, more for the folks who are watching at home. You know, we talked and we just talked about the potential for bylaw changes that could potentially change the way that we look at certain projects. But the thing we have to keep in mind is that that's only one part of the equation, and the other part of the equation is that we also have a lot of constraints and requirements put on us as a community by state law, whether it's Chapter 40B, whether it's, as Counselor McLean mentioned, Chapter 48, the new transit-oriented development legislation that the state passed. And so, you know, we never have perfect control. And when I say we, I mean, the ZBA is really the adjudicatory body for a lot of projects. We never have perfect control. You have a ton of constraints that you've got to work with that significantly limit what you can do. And, you know, when I look at something like Crescent Commons, where, you know, you had the ability of a developer who could really build something by right, and the fact that you were able to, you know, bring down the density, make some changes to the design, which, by the way, looked fantastic, congratulations to Mr. McBain for working on that, and coming up with ways to find a solution that, you know, kind of made the best of a situation that I think when it was first presented, certainly to us, you know, I think we all had the same reaction about the density and the concerns there. So I just, I mention that again to reinforce how appreciative I am of the work that you do, but also to make sure that, you know, those who are watching and those who are residents in town understand that we're never dealing with a perfect situation, and, you know, you guys never have the ability to say yes or no, as you may like to in any projects in a perfect world.
Thank you for that.
So if there aren't any other specific questions, we still have the issue of the committee selection that we've talked about the last two meetings. And Mr. Hatfield, I know you're well aware of these. And if, I don't know whether Counselor Dombrowski wants to start, or Counselor, or Mr. Hatfield, whether you want to kind of give the opinion, if you've talked about it in your committee. Certainly, we want your feedback.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't you start?
Okay. Thank you for that opportunity. Yeah, so we heard about this, you know, as part of the last hearing when it was originally proposed, and saw the language, you know, in the packet. So we were a little surprised by it, I'll be honest. I think by and large, the board members, but, you know, we totally understand that, you know, you're the appointing authority, and, you know, it's totally within your purview to interview candidates for any position if you so choose. So we respect that. And if this were done just as a general, hey, we want to add interviewing to the process, and we'd like to include ZBA in that, then totally reasonable, I think, would be fine. It just, the way it was presented is just sort of, you know, just ZBA and, you know, the way it was worded to, you know, ensure, you know, it's an important role, and we would agree with that, as it was stated, but ensuring that, you know, potential candidates, you know, have alignment with priorities and values of the community, that's the part that I think people may have reacted to, like, what exactly does that mean, and what are we really interviewing? If it's really about assessing skills and experience and, you know, filling gaps, then, yeah, the board would probably make those recommendations, too, to try to fill. But being part of an interview process, we would ask candidates, that's fine, right? Skills, experience, finding a good fit. If we lost our architect, we'd want another architect, right? But trying to find someone that maybe aligns with priorities and values is, I think, potentially problematic. And that's where we said, well, you know, Mr. Mullen might need to weigh in, there's probably questions that can't be asked, you know, what are we, you know, trying to accomplish here? Is it, you know, so, and I saw that Mr. Mullen provided some of that feedback in tonight's package. So, you know, if it's really just about supporting the board and interviewing candidates to look at those kinds of things, then sure, happy to participate. I think it makes sense to have the limited, you know, membership of a town councillor, me as chair, or a designee, and Erin. I don't, I think it was suggested to maybe consider adding Planning Board or Concom. I don't know that that's, you know, reasonable. I don't, I don't, you know, know that they'd be asking the right question or know necessarily what to be looking for in a ZBA member, any more than I'd be qualified to ask questions about a Concom or a planning board member, right? So maybe keeping it to three, I think, is reasonable. I did wonder if the plan was to interview incumbents seeking reappointment, as well as new applicants, because obviously, people are already on the board and have experience and plan to re-up or would like to re-up. I don't know what the interview process would glean from that. So we're just curious if that was the plan. And again, our comments and feedback, again, if really we're thinking we need the right mix of people on each of these boards, at the end of the day, I refer back to our playbook, right? It's, you know, we're tied to the zoning bylaws. We have to apply them to every project. So that's our playbook, those are the rules. Those are approved by a much broader participation at town meeting. So that's what we have to apply and adhere to. So, you know, if the interview process is mainly, you know, just to look at candidates and with that light of skills, experience, background, that kind of thing, seems reasonable, happy to participate. We just obviously had some initial questions, because we didn't really have the full context of what this was about, when it was originally proposed. I've since talked to Ed and gotten a better understanding from his perspective. So we feel a little more comfortable with it, but upfront, it was a little, we were definitely taken a little back, being sort of targeted at the ZBA initially, and not sort of a broader subcommittee for other committees and boards as well. But anyway, those are my initial thoughts, again, from talking to the board members and some of my own thoughts.
Thank you. Those are very thoughtful, very thoughtful input that we will definitely consider. So, I don't know. Counselor Dombrowski, do you want to, do we want to move forward with this, or just take that input and...
I think, Madam Chair, it's completely your call. I might suggest that I can just reserve my comments until we move on to the next agenda item.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on into the next agenda item, unless anybody else has any general comments for ZBA. Yeah? Okay. Great. So thank you so much for coming. We're going to move on to the next agenda item, and we'll definitely take your input under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Madam Chair. Town councillors, have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Thanks, Amy.
So, next item is the committee selection process. And we have in our packets the information from Mr. Mullen, which, actually, I think those are, I'm glad that you're not interviewing me.
I know.
And I'm going to, I think I'm going to save those next time I have to interview somebody, but, no, I mean, seriously, I think they're very, they're very insightful questions that do not cross over into kind of being too political. So I think that that's a very good place to start. And we still like, suppose, Ed, have your outline from last meeting as well. So how do we, let's open that up for discussion.
Maybe, Madam Chair, I could just suggest that I think what we heard tonight just further reinforces the incredibly important role that ZBA plays. It's a high level of skill, certainly. It's a good, it's a very balanced, well-balanced person, well-rounded person. It oftentimes requires good background or unique experience that is not the same as a lot of our other committees, commissions, or boards. And I think a combination of what we heard presented tonight, in conjunction with what Mr. Mullen was able to prepare based upon our last meeting, relative to the sorts of questions that would glean, you know, a better understanding of the candidate's perspective, I think just makes for a far more well-rounded process. And so I, my suggestion to our body is that we move forward with adopting the practice of these interviews. I agree with Mr. Hatfield, and he and I had a very good conversation recently, too. I agree with Mr. Hatfield. I think a three-person, you know, interview group is sufficient for this purpose. I don't think we need five. I think three is sufficient. And we're just making sure that we have the best people, you know, that we can find that fill all the various aspects here. To his point, if there's an architect that's going off of ZBA, we're very much in need of another architect, likely, you know? And so I think that, and I do think, in fairness, I think it's proper protocol would be to interview everyone. So whether you're, you know, you're applying for reappointment or new, because I don't think it's fair otherwise, because some could argue that someone who had been on previously, but then wasn't interviewed, and for some reason, they were just, they were, you know, displaced, and some new person was chosen, and so, well, I didn't get a chance to interview, you know? So, and if you are on as an incumbent looking for reappointment, then you have all the experience that you've brought to the position to talk about in that interview. So, you know, I think it's a benefit and appropriate that we do interview everyone. And those questions, I think, were incredibly well drafted, and I think they hit all the major themes that we'd be concerned about. So I know our meeting is running late, so I don't want to belabor this point, but I think that adopting that practice going forward as a three-member interviewing, you know, subcommittee to interview all applicants, does make sense. And it's not intended in any way to be a negative reflection on the ZBA currently, but keep in mind, the ZBA currently will not always be the ZBA. People are going to be coming on and off, so being able to have this process in place, so regardless of who's on the ZBA, you know, we're going to have turnover. That's just going, that'll be inevitable. And I think this is a good way to make sure we have, you know, solid, you know, quality candidates appointed.
Counselor Santos?
The question I have, Ed, is, and I like the three-member board, I thought what Dave Hatfield had to say, I agree with him with regard to the values and all that statement. Could we just, as opposed to the document presented, could we just vote on having interviewing with three members, potential ZBA candidates, without that document? Do we need the document you presented?
I don't know that we need it. I think that, I mean, I think the meetings, as recorded, and the minutes reflect, you know, what the objectives are. So I, I'm looking at the more, I'm looking at the practicality of it. I think there's, I think there's a value to having interviews. I think a three-person panel to conduct these interviews makes sense. I think using the questions as compared to Mr. Mullen, probably without a single edit, would be appropriate.
No, I totally agree. I like the idea of interviews, and I think it, us wanting to interview underscores how strongly we think of the CBA, because they have people that contribute in the areas that are so important. So I think, yeah, I have no problem with that.
And also, two meetings ago, they also highlighted the fact that, you know, unlike a lot of other similar bodies in cities and towns, they actually do have a good amount of authority and power to make these decisions, you know? So it's really important, you know? They do really important work, they'll be the first to acknowledge that. They're dedicated people, we need to make sure we continue to have dedicated people, you know, as people, you know, over time roll off.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you. I just wanted to make the comment, first of all, how much I appreciate Town Council Mullen for putting together the questions, which are, I mean, I shouldn't be surprised, because everything that you do is excellent and thorough and phenomenal, but, you know, this was as well. I, you know, I just want to make sure to highlight that if we do move ahead with an interview process tonight, which I'm supportive of doing, that our minutes show that our expectation is that we leverage Mr. Mullen's guide for those interviews, so that, you know, we're not crossing any lines that we shouldn't, and also so that we set the precedent that, you know, as people roll on and off this board as well, you know, that we're continuing to hew to a set of questions that are focused on skill sets rather than opinions or perspectives on what you want to see in town.
Agreed.
I like the way you said, skills, experience, background, that's our goal.
Exactly.
Counselor McLean?
As the new guy, I was wondering if people could just inform me, how was this done in the past? What was the process?
Generally, most committees, I mean, I'll just say in general, usually committees look at their candidates, and they make a recommendation usually in writing to us, or they reach out to their liaison, and they make a recommendation based on very similar, what are their skill needs, where are their gaps? And then we take that under consideration, but ultimately, the decision is ours.
Okay.
And it still would be ours.
And it still is ours. Yeah, so even with this, so this is just kind of formalizes what's happening fairly informally, except that it would be a formal three. Yeah.
Did I hear that we would also be interviewing people who are already on the board?
Yeah. I think that that's what Counselor Dombrowski, and I agree, I think you have to interview everybody who's applying.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Counselor Chines?
Sorry, just two other sort of process observations that I'd want to make. First of all, I don't want to move away from receiving recommendations from the committees to which we are appointing on their perspectives on the applicants as well. I find that incredibly helpful. And so I hope that with this discussion, the message is not to the ZBA. Don't tell us what you think. It's, well, you know, we want to hear that, too. Just the other observation I wanted to make is that we do have voting and non-voting members in the ZBA, and this may be not a discussion for today, but, you know, we should also make sure there's clarity around how we handle appointments to those different buckets. And we heard this a little bit with the Conservation Commission, where Mr. Luciani said, you know, we like having non-voting associate members that can kind of get their feet wet before we appoint them into a voting formal role. I think that makes a lot of sense. I think that makes a lot of sense for the ZBA as well, as we think about the alternates kind of moving them into formal voting roles over time. And so that's another thing I'd want to make sure that we don't lose sight of, as we think about the appointment process, you know, not sort of skipping over kind of the alternates that have been serving as we make appointments to the full voting board.
Counselor Danny?
Yeah, I just have to say, I think that it just provides us with another data point by doing the interviews. I think it provides with another data point, and focusing on skills, background, and experience, I completely agree with that, so. Yep. And thank you for those questions. I, too, am glad that I am not being interviewed by you. So those questions, I was like, whoa.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
We move that we create a three-member board, not three-member committee, to interview candidates for the ZBA comprised of head, Chair of ZBA or a designee, Chair of Town Council or a designee, and Erin Kokinda. And that board, that committee, sorry, Sherry, is advisory.
You can get it on, yeah, you can get it on.
And follows Mr. Mullins', uses Mr. Mullins' questions as a very strong guide in the interviews.
Second, Ed.
Ed, discussion.
Yeah, go.
So if I could just refer everyone back to that one pager that was circulated around, if you look at committee composition and then procedure and process, it really reflects almost, it tracks almost exactly to what we've been talking about here. So I would suggest we just adopt the committee composition and then procedure and process, because it talks about, you know, conducting via Zoom, as long as Zoom is a legal means of doing the interviews, et cetera. It references the recommendations still being provided by the ZBA chair, you know, him or herself, in addition to the interview process. So I think if we just adopted the second two-thirds of that sheet, I think it really achieves what we've all talked about here, but is just more detailed.
I don't have it in front of me.
I don't either.
I mean, I can read it aloud, but if you wanted to do that, it would take a second. But I suppose I have to, right? All right, so just...
Want a screen share?
Yeah, why don't you just, can you screen share?
I can draw.
WCHE, can you give Ed capabilities of screen sharing, please?
Just, Madam Chair, just before we go through it, I, you know, recognize that there is some more clarity in that, though. I think a number of the, some of the content in there probably is liable to change, for example, how we hold meetings is subject to the open meeting law. And so I just wonder if we, it's, we're overthinking it, if we adopt the two-thirds of the document. I think the way that Counselor Santos, are we frozen again?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
I, just finishing my thought, I think the motion made by Counselor Santos, I think, is sufficient.
Okay, well, if we can bring this up on the screen, I hope.
Are you able to screen share, Ed?
It's not coming up.
Is Ryan or Ian there?
Yeah, Ryan's got us. I think we're coming.
They gave him cover, so he should be able to.
I can't.
Can you see that now?
Yep.
All right, so if you look specifically at that, then you'll see where it says the committee interview at ZBA lists the members to include, and then procedure and process. And it's exactly, as we talked about, in person or via Zoom, as long as that's, you know, in compliance of open meeting laws, have the conclusion, shall submit written submissions, and then recommendations that the committee are expected to be given due consideration but are not determinative, the ZBA chair or candidate designated, need to offer separate written feedback and/or recommendations by review. So I think that that really, I think that just captures it for us.
I mean, I'm quibbling, but I'm not a big fan of the due consideration. Of course, we will give the committee due consideration, but I may not, like, I don't know. Like, I don't know, I just think that's over, over-managing or overthinking what we're doing. But again, I don't care enough to kick that out.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second, based on what you said. I mean, if you want to amend it to what, we use that as.
I would simply, I would make a motion, like, for a friendly amendment to just incorporate what's, what's been laid out there, committee composite and then process, because it just makes clear that. I'm sorry?
Go ahead. No, I just, the process, I think, what we laid out was the first half. The second half seems to be really process-heavy of how, you know, how the meetings are going to be, and I think that's at the discretion of, of the Chair and the ZBA Chair and Erin. Like, even, even finance doesn't get into that, right? Even finance is not.
Finance is just three and we decide.
Right, right.
But that's very different because that doesn't come back to this body. I mean, that is a very different.
But may I ask, what is process-heavy about just saying that they can do it via Zoom or in person, and they can do it in Zoom as long as it's, because it's open meeting laws? What is, what is process-heavy?
Because I don't think, I don't think you need it. I think it's unnecessary. I think that the, the committee can decide how they want to conduct the interviews.
Well, also, it also says that in the event that there's a, that it also says that you, it's given weight, it provides a process where they submit a written submission to us, it's in our packets before we review, and then the ZBA can also write a separate letter in addition. I'm not, I'm not clear what would problematic about any of that, but I think it does make it clear that the ZBA can still do as they've done in the past and as other committees have done in the past. Like, where, where is the hangup here?
I think it's just over, I think it's over-complicating a situation that, well, again, at 10:15, I don't, you know, I'm fine with a friendly amendment if we get rid of the given due consideration sentence. I was never a fan of that in the beginning, Ed, only because I think it feels strong-arming to me, but.
Like, you make the recommendation, if we follow it, we follow it.
But we're, we're getting due consideration.
Who is? Well, we are, but then we don't have to say it, though. No, why do you have to say it? I think we always give due consideration. I think that's our role. Go ahead, Counselor Chines.
I mean, I think we're kind of splitting hairs at this point.
I do too, yes.
I suggest we move the question and move on.
Okay, so we have on the table the motion from Counselor Santos, seconded, right? Did we second it?
Yes.
So without the friendly amendment, unless you want to take it without the due consideration, you can do that.
I'll take the friendly amendment without that due consideration sentence. Negotiation. It's like, like we're in court.
Okay, so.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's pretty innocuous, but I think it's fine.
Okay, so we have the motion. Any additional discussion? Hearing done?
Can I, can I, I'm sorry. Can I, I'm sorry.
It's always someone.
I would suggest that you make the council chair or designee the Chair of the selection committee, frankly, but have someone needs to take the bull by the horns and set it up and take responsibility, so.
And then we'll be responsible for all the process.
Three of them looking at each other. Just my suggestion. Friendly suggestion.
Okay, so we have the motion. Using the language, so using the language that's in the original proposal, plus using Mr. Mullins' questions as the strong guidance, with the Chair of the, or the Chair's designee from the Town Council as the Chair of the three-person selection committee, in order to ensure that said process is followed. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danny?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Very good, thanks for that. We are at 10:15 and a number of items to go, so American Rescue Plan, ARPA, Steve.
Yes, hopefully, I guess, WC, yes, I'll, I'll start talking while WC puts that, puts that up. So we know what the American Rescue Plan, commonly known as ARPA, is providing funds. Is this going to work, this? This going to work for me? Yes. It's providing funds to the Commonwealth and municipalities through the, through, you know, federal funds. Sign into law in March 11th of 2021. It can be used for expenses from March 3rd, 2021 forward, okay? Not an issue for anything that we've done or are talking about. Costs must be incurred or obligated by December 31st, 2024. To explain that, we might have a project that has been, that's undergoing, and, you know, it's half-built, we haven't spent all the money, but as long as we appropriated it, we'd be fine. There is some discussion on whether or not payroll could be used past December 31st, 2024. There's some differing opinions on that. Nothing I would suggest would go that far anyway, so I wouldn't worry about that for budget. And the funds are received directly from the U.S. Treasury. So we know that Wakefield's Chair has a little over $8 million. $5 million of it is, and this is based on population, $5 million is from the, from the county, so we don't have a functioning county government across, remember, this is a national law across the country, there are a lot of county governments. Middlesex County doesn't happen to be one, so that, we got that from the county share and we got that from the town share, so the total is $8 million, okay? Initially, there were four, excuse me, five, five expense categories that you had to spend the money on. Public health spending, anything to do with the pandemic, basically. Economic impacts of the public health emergency, lost public sector revenue, and that's involved for a reason, we will come back to that. Premium pay for essential workers, and that could be anybody from what we would think about our first responders to actually, in the private sector, the people that worked, you know, in essential jobs, grocery, in the grocery stores, things like that. Water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So there was a lot of talk about how you go about spending this money. What do you, what do you do? And I got to say that our federal delegation really listened to us because you, I don't think we wanted to make sure, we being municipalities, going into an area, we had to, like, get everything pre-approved, you know, every little thing, does it really fit? Is it going to get clawed back? Are we going to get audited a few years? And I would say that this is something that our state, our federal delegation did a great job on, presented this to MMA, if you may remember those who watch them, is that any municipality may take up to a standard allowance of $10 million to spend on government services. Remember, we received eight, so, we received eight, that eight is less than 10. I remember that from the Herd School. So I think that we're, we're okay there on spending this on any government services. I've been to a lot of webinars at the, at the state level on this, and I've looked at the regs ad nauseam, and Counsel Mullen agrees, agrees with me in that regard. The only thing we could not spend money on, and they're enumerated, a funding of debt service or replenishing reserves. So we couldn't take this and say, let's pay $10,000 worth of bonds and then, or just let's put it all into our reserves, not what this was supposed to be. Settling judgments, if we had a judgment, we couldn't settle it. Tax reduction, number of people said, can you lower Prop 2.5? Be great to do, but we can't, it's actually in the law. We can't fund our pensions or OPEB, OPEB obligations. And this was kind of blossomed up a little bit new. We can't undermine, use any money undermining of CDC mitigation practices. So I guess that's if we went out and started using it to sponsor anti-vaccine seminars or masks, we couldn't do that, okay? So we know about this, public health spending, any COVID-19, to go back from before, any COVID-19 mitigation effort, medical expenses, behavior, health, health and safety personnel. This is absolutely public health spending, by the book, either under the $10 million or, or we were going the other way. I know I'm going quickly because of the hour. Economic impacts of public health emergency, mitigate economic harm to workers, households, small businesses, nonprofits, and education loss. We've talked a lot about the education loss that has occurred all over the place. Essential workers are really critical infrastructure personnel and end or overtime costs, and we, we received some of that ourselves during the pandemic, okay? Water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, not a real issue for us here. We've got good clean water access. We have some wastewater and stormwater problems, not to the extent of other areas the country do. We have pretty good broadband access, and I think our cybersecurity is actually pretty good in our area right now. But again, this is a national area. So what is this, so really, here, where we are, and what does this really mean? Well, based on comments from the Town Council, we held a webinar on December 16th, just a couple, a week, I guess, before Christmas. Great job done by Erin Kokinda, Jim McDonald, Sherry Dalton, who put it all together, and Victor was one of my panelists there as well. And we had 20-plus attendees that came out, and we put them out into different breakout rooms, and we talked about public health spending, items they'd like to see us spend money on, public health, with a big array of items. Economic impacts of the public health emergency, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Think of those things. So the webinar comments were really, really quite interesting and very consistent with what we're hearing. A big call for increased mental health services for students and residents. That was probably heard the most discussed in every breakout group. I think we had three breakout groups. Also, outdoor projects, including green space, pedestrian access, and amenities. I think people really got to like the outdoor dining and things like that, and they really came to realize that, hey, if we can do more outdoors, have more connectivity with neighbors, that'd be really great. They talked about pop-up events, really enjoying that. Essential worker pay was discussed, and again, business support, including that outdoor dining and facade improvements. So this is what came up into that webinar that we had. But we didn't want to stop there, and we actually did do a public survey, and we got 57 respondents and really was very open-ended, and we asked people what they thought about. 45% premium pay for essential workers. I have my, my philosophy or my theory on where that came from, but that's okay, just let that go. Lot of people talked about outdoor amenities, sidewalks, and green space. During the time when this came in, a lot of people concerned about masks and testing, so you can see that reflected here. Other infrastructure needs, 8% still call for tax relief, and 7% of those call for mental health and wellness. I got to say that of all the communities around us, no one that I know of has done all of this route. In fact, a lot of communities have said, I saw your webinar and YouTube, can you send me the slide deck? I said, absolutely. So I think we're a little bit ahead of the curve. So where do we go from here? I think the council needs to know is that some of this money, we've already spent, we've already appropriated. We approved it in our fiscal '22 budget, which we're in now, we did that at town meeting. We did a little bit for our fiscal '23 budget, and let's talk about that. So we had different items in fiscal '22, the town hall greeters that we brought in. We decided to use federal funds for that. We updated the police clinicians' hours, very appropriate. We did that, this is, this is the year we're in now, we all voted that. Schools, we talked about $400,000 because, remember, we didn't know where we were going to be on the budget at that time, and we actually increased the public, put in a part-time, more hours for public health nursing, again, very appropriate in last year. So that was kind of la, this current year that we're in now, done in the, I guess, May town meeting that year. This year, we've talked about some of the other budgets, town hall, we kept $21,500 in that. Health budget, we talked about that, and we did the health budget, expanding those services using this as seed money. The schools will come forward. If any of you watched their presentation the other night, or when they came to FinCom, they will be in front of our board, I believe, on the 28th, if I'm not mistaken. I think the 28th are coming, right, Sherry, the schools?
Yeah.
Yes, 28th. They will be looking to using some of these ARPA funds to continue some of the programs that they had before. So that's this year. I mentioned to the, to the Town Council that I would use, I would suggest that we use the health budget in seed money and that we, we kind of phased that into the tax levy. That actual $75,000 that we got to remember for fiscal year '24, I'm sure Kevin will remember if we don't, that may not be needed as much when we get to one of the items Tom Mullen's going to talk about. So of our $8 million, here's, of the money that we've spent already, on top of the budget, we have school and first responder overtime, contract tracing, which was really important in the beginning. We were one of the few communities that continued to do that, and I think we've heard Elaine Silva, us and Melrose, really, because Elaine Silva pushed both of us to continue that. And that made a big difference in the spread and the comfort for the families of what happened during the Omicron and what have you. Test kits, we have gotten inundated with calls for test kits. We have them, we've distributed a lot to the schools, a lot to businesses, businesses that have asked for them, homeowners that have asked for them, you know, people that need it, and we still have some, so if anybody wants them, we're ready for the next wave. I think they're, they're good until July, they have a shelf life until July, and actually some of our surrounding communities who weren't as good in Gotham have actually reached out to us, and we've actually sold some to other communities. I always said, we wanted to get a little, little upgrade on that. Tom was much nicer than me and wouldn't do it, and I agree. We had clinics, we had elections, we had town meeting. Those town meetings cost a lot more to put out, think of the social distancing, spent that money, and assistance to some households in needs, main numbers, the clinics there. So that's a total of 326. I'm going to say that maybe if you remember when we did our, the fire department, fire department was really hit with a third of the fire department out, either exposed to or actually having the virus. We may want to think about using some of that, some of the money, and to lower that. We're going to go for a supplement in the spring anyway and budget like we have in the past, and probably reserve fund, but this may be a good use for some of it as well. That's identifiable overtime use that we already have directly related to it, that actually FEMA, after telling us they would cover, decided not to. That's where that number came from. So the total of that is $434,000. So now we get to the, I'm going to say it's the fun part, okay? This is purely my suggestion, recommendation, a way that maybe we want to go and be more discussion by this council, absolutely, because there are certain items that need to be approved by the council. But I was thinking, as I looked at this, what was left, $500,000 for business and nonprofit grants. These really, these improvements could really build environment of neighborhoods and connectivity, something I'm thinking about, was mentioned by a lot of the people during our webinar and our, and our survey. Facade improvements, under our local rapid, local rapid recovery plan, the state came through, a lot of digital marketing. Our local businesses need to do more digital marketing and need help, and a number of them really set it up and have done really well, and nonprofits for that, for that area too. Infrastructure, to me, this is the fun one, right? I would, I would carve out a big amount of this for infrastructure, and whether that's parks, plazas, sidewalk connectivity, recreation, it definitely promotes healthier living environments, outdoor recreation, socialization, and those connections between neighborhoods. We've talked about that. Here's a good way that we can look at it. I would hold $100,000 for households, contingencies coming that may come down, you know, they're, maybe we're not going to see this for a few months. And I would hold half a million back right now for contingency because I don't know, sitting here, I can't say we're not going to get another issue here. I'm not, we may put up stuff. So I like to be kind of a visual person, so I put together, or actually, Jen did this, I gave her the numbers. I can't take credit for it, kind of where, where, where it would break down on a pie chart, and this would come out around to the eight, to the $8 million a notice. I did round the contingency on there just to put it through, but, you know, it would be, you know, now that's in yellow, 68% for infrastructure, 6% for business and nonprofits, 6% for expenditures, 13% for the budgetary items, 6% contingency, and household assistance around 1%. So for me, this is a, I'm not going to say a guide, a suggestion. Individual projects would have to certainly come back to the, to the Town Council to decide in that, that big bucket of $550,000. I think we could put a program together on the businesses and nonprofits in our office and with the help of my staff there, as well as household assistance, and hopefully in 2024, we come back and say, we've got this half a million we haven't spent yet, we held it back, or maybe 2000 or 2023, what are we going to do with that? So I know a lot of you have been asking kind of what direction we're going in, certain items we've already decided on. Now, I think, comes the real interesting and exciting part, and, hey, hopefully we'll get. And hey, hopefully we'll get some more, some more people give us some more suggestions. But I think, you know, this, this really shows exactly where we were, what our respondents really wanted and kind of the direction we'd like to go. Is that quick enough, Anne?
No, that's, no, that's great. I feel badly rushed.
No, 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 don't feel bad at all. Don't feel bad at all.
That we need to spend some time on.
Yeah.
And you don't really need to vote on anything tonight. It's just kind of the direction.
I know it's late and I don't want to really get into it, but I thank you so much for this proposal. Can we go back one slide? I just, I just, I just want to be known that I, I love the infrastructure. That's where most of the money is going. I want to be really sure we're not, I want to be creative on this. I don't want to use money that we will get from other sources that we already have in the pipeline. I think this is an opportunity to be bold and to not kind of fund something that we've already talked about. And so I look at that, I think, you know, outdoor seating, you kind of sent an email about that. Outdoor dining options, excite people. I think making kind of community spaces where people can eat outside, more picnic benches, more, you know, helping businesses get tent. So I, I'm okay, like, I like that number. I just want to be clear that I want it to be new, different things and not something that we've already talked about, that we have money coming in from other places. Yeah. Counsel Chines?
Thank you. Very quickly, I appreciate this framework and I, I know we'll spend a lot more time on this in the future. Just a couple of very quick questions. On the infrastructure component, you know, one of the things that we did in fiscal '21, I believe, was we deferred $1 million of capital expenditures. Do you see that as part of that bucket or is that, are we looking at that separately?
I, I am looking at it, the capital planning committee is watching, they're not going to like it, right? I'm looking at it separately and I'll tell you why. I think that we did a lot of capital improvements through the CARES Act. A lot of those improvements done by the schools, particularly in the HVAC systems and items like that. We're on the list anyway. So I think where you're saying that, where we're saying that we lost a million, I think we got a lot of it back, okay? But that, that isn't to say that, you know, there may be some projects we need to do. And it's not, it's not really exciting, but let's say a new roof for the civic center, okay? We need to do a new roof. We know we do need, we need to do a new roof. We have a, I have a request into the state legislature for $100,000, okay? It's going to be 115, all right? Would we say, let's match a little bit of this with that? Would we try to parlay things? I think that's something that we would bring back to the council. But I don't think I see putting a whole-scale, million-dollar push on capital, on the capital planning right now. I would, I would rather use it for some other bigger ticket items. But that doesn't mean that some of it wouldn't be.
Yeah. So I, I guess maybe what would be helpful as we continue this discussion is maybe to account for, you know, for 2021, where we appropriated a million in capital. What were the other capital needs that we addressed through CARES Act? Just so we get a census to, you know, comparing apples to apples. You know, because what I, what I don't want to do, I definitely hear you and I'm fully supportive of Counselor Butt's comments on spending this on, you know, new things and thinking beyond sort of what we've been working through. But I also want to make sure that we're not falling behind on some of our obligations that we have as well. And it sounds like we may not be, but it would just be helpful to see that accounting, for lack of a better word.
Yeah. But actually, I think when you get capital, the capital planning in a couple, in a couple of meetings from now, I think you'll, that part will become much, a little bit much more clearer for you too.
The, the other thing that I just wanted to highlight, and actually, this may be part of the contingency discussion as well. But when we talked about budget expenditures, obviously, we, we looked at sort of a scaled-down use of ARPA funds for the Health and Human Services investments we talked about last meeting. We don't have that same scale down for, for the schools. And, and I do worry that, just given the social, emotional impact of the pandemic, I think we are looking at a multi-year impact in terms of learning and development and behavior impacts in, in the schools. And so, again, I, I think this may be something, we'll talk about the school budget next time. This may be something where, as we think about the future use of that contingency, you know, that's an area of, of use that we'd want to consider. But I, I just don't want to lose sight of that component because I, I don't think that we can undersell exactly how impactful that's going to be over the next few years.
Why are you laughing at my binder? Come on. I'm going to pull it out. I'm going to have the answer right for you right now. So in the, in the school department presentation, the initial presentation, the finance committee, the, they have a lot of new items in there. Of the ARPA funds that they were thinking were ARPA funds, were two full-time custodians, all right, and two float nurses. So that's, that, we're looking at those four, so there could be a phase down of those. But that's what they were looking for, for ARPA funds. The others were regular budgetary funds.
Yeah. And I guess my, my question, I, I think that there, I think we may find that the, the need for those, again, thinking more of special education, behavioral intervention and so forth. I think we may find that the need for those services is actually going to be even greater than what I know they've already put in their budget proposal. So I just, I want to make sure we're all open-minded to that, not just in this budget cycle, but in the future. Because again, I, I think we're just seeing the tip of the iceberg in terms of the social, emotional impact of this on, on some of the kids in the community.
Counsel Denny?
Yeah. And I would just say, as I, I agree with Counselor Butt, is that I think that these should be new opportunities for us that, and I think that they should be connected to what we dealt with, with COVID and what we learned from COVID about like the whole idea of open space, the whole idea of helping businesses that really did suffer. We're fortunate that, I don't think we had any restaurants go out of business. But you know what? That doesn't mean that they didn't suffer. And even if they were able to rebound, what they went through was a very difficult time. So I, I agree, we should support them. I also think that, you know, WCAT did an outstanding job of really bringing government into people's homes and letting people stay involved and covering more meetings than ever before they continued to do it. Too so. So I know that there, as a result of everybody cord-cutting, the money that they're getting from cable has gone down. And I think that that should definitely be a consideration. I think that fits ARPA funding quite well. So I keep my list, so I'll keep it going. But for, for further discussions, I have my little list I pull up, so.
Counsel McLean?
You're unmuted.
I've done it again. I know Anne has a close relationship with Mayor Driscoll. And my memory is that in Seon, they were doing payments to essential workers of, you know, restaurant and people that, that, you know, ill who also suffered through this. And I wonder if there's a methodology where we could do some direct payments here. And maybe we could contact Mayor Driscoll for what, what they did there as, as perhaps a guide. I also don't see senior housing mentioned and just like put it applied for consideration that if we have a building, for example, that isn't doing anything, this might be, you know, town-owned. Not, not mentioning a particular building, but they're out there, the Ulls School is just sitting there.
Well, the Ulls School's rented.
Yeah, it's seen.
Ulls School's been rented for a long time.
Right. Well, maybe we have a possibility. I'll just put it this way. I'm not telling anybody that I have an answer. But, you know, we've got a mile-long list, waiting list for senior housing. I'm wondering whether any of this 5.5 million could be used to, you know, to do something relative to senior housing. Just bring it up as a point.
Great. So Counsel Nebraska?
Just say quickly that having attended that, that session back in December, there was a lot of excitement and interest from my perspective in the downtown and in a lot of what has been talked about tonight, about the idea of, you know, having, you know, how to widen the downtown in different ways without, you know, with outdoor space, pop-up events, those sorts of things. I think, you know, that coupled with the sidewalk connectivity pieces we've talked about have been long priorities of this council. And I, I think this is an opportunity to really jumpstart some of that in a real meaningful way. So I think we, we can't lose sight of that either.
Taking all this down? So we'll have to figure out how to, to move forward because it's, it's something that can get away from us if we don't kind of keep it. But so if anybody has ideas on how to do that, I don't know whether it's just kind of a standing agenda item or...
I, I was going to say, I think maybe this is a standing agenda item. Maybe not every meeting, but, you know, I think we should come back to it once a month because I, I know we all have expressed some ideas, you know, to each other in sort of one-on-one discussions, to Mr. Mayo. It probably makes sense to start to get some of those ideas in, on the table and start to think about a framework, particularly for that 5.5 million. I mean, we, we should talk about the amounts for the others, but I, my suspicion is that, you know, we probably all would be comfortable with what we have laid out in those other buckets. But the, the five and a half million is obviously a big piece and, you know, certainly not something we should make any decisions at, you know, 10:45 after a long meeting tonight.
No, but I was, but I'd love to get your suggestions in a, so I can put them into a spreadsheet.
Oh, good. Sure.
Yeah. I mean, maybe there's like one or two slides. If you have ideas, throw your ideas out there.
Can I just ask one more question? Is this something that the master plan could be, this could be an activity for the master plan or in terms of incorporating?
This is all at the discretion of the town council.
Right, right.
I would say.
I'm saying that master plan could kind of maybe have suggestions or guidance?
I think they could suggest, suggestions. I would be fearful of the timing.
I know, that's right. I know.
So I would be worried.
I know, I know, I know.
Okay. So good. So I, I do think keeping it on a monthly, at least on a monthly basis. And if people have, you know, ideas that they want to share with their colleagues, you know, put one or two slides together.
And the public too. I mean, that, that survey is still up. Please give us your, your ideas.
Madam Chair, maybe ask that maybe for the next discussion we have a month from now, if kind of our, our collective homework, I guess the council could be to, you know, be prepared to talk about a couple of, you know, the ideas that are, are important to us just to, again, start to get them on the table and start to get some public discussion on those.
Yep.
Just wanted everyone to kind of know where we were.
I think it's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 12, appointment of electrical inspector for vacation sick replacement. We have the, a resume from Philip Sordillo. Do I have a motion to accept Mr. Sordillo as the vacation replacement?
So moved second.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos in a discussion, hearing none. Roll call, vote, Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Nebraska?
I.
Counsel Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counsel Danahue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Mr. Mayo, update on 383 Water Street?
Yes. As the council requested last meeting, I would give an update more on the housing situation. Not so much the property cleanup. That'll be in two weeks. However, I will tell you that the, the big backhoe claw was there working today. I got many pictures of it in action, pulling things out of the, out of the rubble and putting them aside and getting a lot of that. So that, that's moving, that was moving quite well. But as far as this whole situation is concerned, you know, this started out one of the hardest issues I've ever faced in an emotional sense in, you know, 15 years, sitting in, I guess, this seat way over here. But I tell you, it's, it's turning into one of the most rewarding issues I've been involved in, really because of our team at town hall, your team at town hall and the generosity of the public. It's been absolutely unbelievable. And I think that our team has been fabulous, especially in the mental health area, really knowing when to give a rose and then give a, and a velvet glove and then take the, take the velvet glove off and show a little bit of power. So that's been going, that's been going really well. And our entire staff, from the building department to Coral Hope at the, and Anthony in the Board of Health, to the fire department, has really worked out very well on this whole thing. And I will say that Attorney McGrail's been great working with the property owner and helping him out with us. So here's where we are. And again, the generosity of Wakefield is unbelievable. So not only am I going to come back to this council with, you know, probably over 6,000 in donations from people, most of whom want to be anonymous. But 128 Plumbing and Electric, which is a, again, 128 Plumbing and Electric, which is one of our larger corporate citizens, they are, have met at the site. I was there with them, with all of our administrative and inspectional team. They are going to do the work necessary in the house to bring it back to habitability. They are going to move away from, I know this, I shared this with the chair Monday morning. They're going to move away from gas and/or oil into fully electric on them. And the owner of that company, David Williams, and his son Ryan were there. And I, I thanked him for coming out and brought his electrician and his plumber out and everything and thanking for helping him out. And what he said to me is that, you know, Steve, I am blessed to help out in this way. So it is amazing and it's been a very emotional experience for a lot of the people that are involved here. But I would not, and, and 128 is going to be out there this week doing much of the work, maybe all the work, and working with Coral and the Board of Health. I'm hoping that when we get back to our, two weeks from now, that that, that level is over, that we have returned to the house. So I know that they were asked about that and it's really, is amazing and you should all feel really good about your town and how the people are here.
Any questions? Okay. Item 14, town-owned land. Approval to go out to bid for town-owned land located on Woodland Avenue. There's information in the packet.
Again, Madam Chair, this is one of those, I'm jumping in. I did, I did drive by yesterday and got caught in horrible traffic.
I get lots of complaints from that neighborhood. Yes.
Yes, they're doing, we're doing the gas lanes on the street. Well, we get this every now and then from people in the neighborhood that there's a adjacent lot of town-owned land next to them. And this is tax title property, so it falls under the town council. They want to buy the property, add it to their own, and they don't, they don't want to build on it. They want to preserve it in its current natural form. If the council is so inclined to go out to bid, because we would go out to bid, nothing is guaranteed that this particular person would get it, even though usually that's what happens. I would suggest that the bid include language that the land cannot be built upon or combined with any other land to create any other buildable lots or access to other buildable lots. This will make sure that we don't get, you know, someone's not taking advantage of this. And, you know, the, the people that live next door are very sincere, that they said that they would like to maintain it. But they do understand that it, there's no guarantees. They'd have to go to bid and the council could reject the bid. So the process tonight would just be to request going out to bid with those restrictions on ARPA body.
Counsel McLean?
Let's see, for once I'm not muted. Okay. You can hear me?
Yes.
There you go. I, yeah, like Steve, I visited the property. The reason I'm home tonight is because it was cold and I ran down there. And it does look to me like on this map that we have on page, I don't know, 57, 61, 62, whatever it is, you know, that, that it does join the property. Doesn't seem to be right on Woodland. So I totally agree with Steve because that's what I wanted to suggest was, since the folks that want to buy the property claim that they want to do it to preserve, that we put in those restrictions because, you know, we don't have a particular use for it. It's not so much what the price is going to be for the town. It's just to make sure that there's not something there on the Melrose side of the property that we don't see that might be something that could be a problem in the future. So I agree with Steve on the restrictions.
Counsel Nebraska?
I, I respect that the owners want to keep it as is, but I just don't see a reason why we have to sell off town-owned property to maintain things as, as they currently are. We can't create more, more land within town. And while we may not have a current need, I don't know what the future may hold, you know, for us as a town. And if the objective of the owner is simply to preserve it in its current state, keeping it as town-owned property, he would achieve that. And so I would be in favor of just keeping it under our, our control as, as a town.
And I have to say, go ahead, Counsel Santos.
It's my understanding that this, it's not like a wide-open plot of land. It's not... It's not like some other pieces that have come before us where, where a butters want to buy and we've said no, and the DPW has weighed in and said, not a good idea. This seems to be something that is just, would never be usable for us.
It's pretty much ledge.
It's ledge.
It's a, it's a.
It's a ledge hill.
It's a ledge hill.
So it does, this one doesn't bother me at all that I think we're giving up town property. It's just a ledge hill next to the, next to the home.
And, and my, my initial thoughts were absolutely, why, not so much why would we sell it off because we might need it later, because this is ledge. This is, I, I just, I mean, I'll tell you, I've made some, we've sold some land off since I've been in town that I think we probably in retrospect shouldn't have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I, the only way I would say not to sell this is if we put it in conservation land, because I wouldn't want a town council to come back in 10 or 15 years and start blasting into the ledge. And we may get to that point, you know, where, I mean, we've seen people blasting into ledge all over town and putting in housing. And so I guess the only way that, if we can write it with these covenants that it does get protected, I'm okay with that. I mean, in retrospect, or alternatively, we keep it, but we write those same kind of covenants to the town.
Yeah.
To do the same thing. So that's the only way I would, I would do it.
And he's going to tell you.
Well, Madam Chair, just one, one thought, I'm, I'm not either for or against this, but I want you to understand, this is tax title land, which the town holds really just for the purpose of resale.
Oh.
You, you're probably familiar with the rule that adverse possession doesn't run against the town. So, you know, somebody using town property doesn't get control of it over 20 years. The exception there is tax title land.
Interesting, okay.
So you actually have to police this kind of thing to make sure that it's not being put to a private use.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, anybody else before, because Mike's already talked. Counselor McLean, go ahead.
Yeah, the only question I would have for Steve and Counselor Mullin is, um, is there any risk despite language we might use relative to this new 40A because the land is nowhere near the Greenwood Station, but it's a quarter mile from the Melrose Highlands?
Well, I'll, I'll jump in and Tom can hit me if I'm wrong. I don't think that Melrose can create zoning in Wakefield, so not yet anyway. Broder has tried, but we've told them no, so.
But the question is, can, can the Commonwealth, but it's, knows it in everybody's business and somehow say, well, you know, that's a quarter mile from the Highlands, so we should create some kind of exception for it and make it into a three family. That's just my question. I don't know.
We, we obviously can't, you know, speculate about what the, the state might do in the future. I would just note that, uh, no restriction that we impose can be effective for longer than 30 years. Where, where you see perpetual restrictions, it's because we get state approval for certain particular kinds, like a conservation restriction, historic preservation. But if you don't fall within one of those categories and get state approval, it's a 30-year maximum.
Counselor Nebraska.
Uh, just a question for Mr. Mullin. So Mr. Mullin, if we just kept the land as a town, could we not designate it as conservation land to show us Smith Galvin's point and just keep it forever wild?
Yeah, we could. If you, if you want to make some municipal use, including conservation use, of tax title land, then you go to town meeting and you get a two-thirds vote to transfer the custody and purpose of the land to a new custodian and a new purpose.
Because I, I personally would be more in favor of just making it conservation land permanently. I mean, I, I understand, you know, what we're talking about with this, but, um, you know, why risk something different, some different purpose? And I think it also achieves, achieves the neighbor's objective, the interested purchaser's objective of keeping it as, you know, intact natural land.
How much money do we think we would get for it, Steve?
I don't know. I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't want to put anything in the, in, I don't want to, uh, the board doesn't, the town council doesn't have to accept anything, right? They can, they can reject everything, but I can't imagine these items bringing more than 10 grand when we've done them in the past. This is, this is because a neighbor requested it, that's why it's here.
So. Counselor, you?
So if the neighbor, if, if we were to sell it to the neighbor, we would just make it that they can't do anything with it?
We would go out to bid with those restrictions.
We would go out to bid, we would go out to bid with those restrictions, then whoever ended up purchasing it couldn't do anything with it. So it really would be conservation land, but then it would even be more protected because then the state couldn't come in and tell us what to do.
Well, no, no. If, if we sold it subject to the restriction that Steve suggested, the new owner would be able to build on it.
Oh.
It's just that he couldn't create a new, a newly buildable lot.
No, I would say not to be built on. I put that.
Not to be built on at all?
Not to be part of my, that'd be part of my.
All right.
I mean, I guess my concern is we've done this in the past and we've been told, oh, it was too small to build on. And you know what happened? It got fences put all over it, so nobody could get into it. And that's what kind of bothers me. I mean, if we own this land and it's conservation land, people can hike up there, they can, you know, they can do, it's the town's land. So I, I would hate to see somebody buy it and even not build on it and just fence it would be as bad to me.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, then I would like to make a motion that we just designate this, this land as, as conservation land and whatever language we need, Mr. Mullin, to achieve that, because I'm concerned about the 30 years also being, um, you know, a consideration here in addition to everything else that.
Oh, you muted there, so you might have hit something.
Sorry, I don't know what happened there. Um, I mean, I think we're all looking for the same objective, but I don't, I think it's best achieved by just designating it as conservation land, which to my understanding then would be in perpetuity, not just for the 30-year period. And we don't have the risk of fences going up or, um, you know, expansion of property, you know, homes or whatever the case, no building on it of any sort. So why would we not do that? Especially, it's not like we're going to realize a couple hundred thousand dollars or something for this. So why would we not just keep it? It's very, very small money to keep, you know, conservation land. And that's a, and that frankly, there's a value to that, especially in our town. And, and that land is at a premium right now.
So is that a motion?
So, yes, it's a very long way of saying, I'm making a motion that we designate as conservation land and subject to whatever requirements to determine whether we have to add to this motion.
So we have discussion here, but I just want to get through the motion. Is there a second to the motion? Can I second the motion?
Yeah, I'll second your, yeah, I'll second the motion.
All right, go ahead, go ahead, Jonathan.
I was just going to suggest, I, I think there are a lot of questions that I have on this one. And so I'm wondering if we kind of take some parallel paths on this. I think one would be exploring what it would take to declare it as conservation land. I, I think, you know, we got kind of the, the top of the head view of that, but, you know, I'm sure there's more specifics to it that probably behooves us to talk through more. I, I also do wonder if it makes sense to put the bid package out. We're not obligated to accept any bid. And so just in the interest of kind of getting full information about our options here, I mean, could we come back and review both whatever bids we get and also sort of the process for declaring this is conservation land together and, and that way kind of make an informed decision with the, the information on the table in front of us?
We can do whatever we want. I, I just hate to exercise people if we don't have any intention of selling it.
Well, and so maybe then I'd say the other piece would be, I mean, we can certainly pause on the bid and maybe come back for a discussion next time, just with more information about the process around declaring something conservation land. I, I just feel like I'm, I'm not ready yet to kind of vote on.
We don't know what the cost of our conservation, does it have to be surveyed?
Exactly. I think there's just some information that we need to talk about before we actually make a decision on that.
So can we just table, okay, so we do have an emotion on, just a reminder, we do have a motion.
Can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
Can we, um, can we put a stipulation in there that they can't, if they were to buy it, that they can't put a fence around it? Can we add that in?
I think there's a fence around it now.
Okay.
I sure.
But it doesn't change the fact that we have that 30-year limit on this. That doesn't, that doesn't go away with any of these restrictions. So I, I think we should just, why don't we just come back to this perhaps?
Yeah, let's just table this and come back with more information and if we could get some more information on the different options, conservation, um, selling, kinds of things.
Can I also ask, just as part of that process, I, I mean, I know we've seen sort of the site plan, but I mean, is it accessible from other publicly, you know, as we think about kind of public use? I mean, I, I don't get the sense that there's any sort of way of accessing it outside.
Though I have to say, I mean, there may be ways coming in from Melrose. From what we see in Wakefield, it looks like a wall, but there may be, people might come over the other side and want to walk down.
So that, I guess that's the question, that I'd love to get more information on that. I mean, I, you can, we can only see what was on the Wakefield property map.
I'm amazed in COVID, the places people find to hike, even in Wakefield, you know? So, yeah, so I think that those are good questions and I think it all, we also have to ask Melrose what connects them to it. Okay. So are you okay, Ed, tabling this for more information?
I'm happy to, yeah, I'm happy for you to table it, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Item 15, settlement of the opioid litigation. Mr. Mullin.
Yeah, very quickly, your board already agreed to a small settlement with Collegium, which is one of the opioid distributors, a very, very small one. This is a bigger deal. This is our part of a deal that was negotiated by the state attorney general with Johnson &amp; Johnson &amp; Janson, two major manufacturers, and with a group of distributors. And basically, this takes a pot of money and divides it up pursuant to a formula among all of the cities and towns in Massachusetts. Now, we, no attorney's fees would come out of this. So as you know, we've hired a law firm, Scott &amp; Scott, but they would not be paid out of this. And the sum would be paid over the course of 18 years. It would be subject to restrictions as to use. It could only be used for opioid prevention, education, and treatment. And let me anticipate your big questions, how come most abutting towns got more out of the settlement than Wakefield?
Yeah.
And I think, believe it or not, this is good news because unlike the previous settlement, which looked at a number of factors, including population size, and Wakefield, of course, wasn't big compared to some of the other communities, here, um, we are only looking at opioid use disorder, overdoses, and shipments of opioids into communities. Wakefield, I think, fared better than most of our neighbors in the opioid pandemic. So, so I'm happy to try to answer any of your questions, and this does not end all the litigation. We've still got cases pending, um, against the Sackler family and others, but I would be asking for a vote to authorize the chair to execute the settlement participation forms that are before you.
I think the other thing that's different about this settlement is that this money, unlike the one that we did last week, or last meeting, does need to be utilized for, you know, recovery and.
Which is okay, we, we have, we have ways to spend that money, we need for it.
Yeah, absolutely.
That doesn't bother, doesn't bother me at all.
I move that we, the chair accepts the proposed settlement with the distributors in Janson, J&amp;J, regarding the opioid litigation as presented by Attorney Mullin.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Counselor Butt stepped out, but we'll, we'll do the vote and come back around to her. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Nebraska?
I.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
We can.
We can.
We can take the vote.
Yeah, okay, so we're good. Six zero. Okay. Um, the MBTA investment plan.
All right, so this, I received a letter from, um, Mr. Poflack, Steve Poftak, who is the general manager of the, um, of MSDOT, and they are going through their capital investment plan for the years 2023 to 2027. They're looking for input, for suggestions. I was thinking that there's, there's already some projects that they're taking on the tracks that we probably don't want to, don't need to get involved in. However, there have been, our, our two stations in Wakefield are not handicapped accessible. And my suggestion would be that we do draft a letter from the board for the chair's signature, that, um, we do, uh, look towards that, and that's what we would suggest that they do. I was on a call with Angel Donahue, who's their kind of projects manager. He mentioned to me on the, and I mentioned that to them, he mentioned to me that he thought it was, um, $50 million, which I'm having a real trouble wrapping my head around that cost, but I don't care what it is, we should put in for it.
$50 million for accessibility?
For accessibility, yeah.
At both stations or at one station?
I think he was just talking about North Ave.
What?
I have, I have a lot of.
No wonder the MBTA is broke.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got to be kidding me, it makes it actually make no sense.
And it may be that they do the whole track, they raise the tracks and what have you, but still, I still had trouble wrapping my head around it. But I do think that whatever it is, there are people that want to use that, that, the communal rail, that really have a great problem too. And we've talked about that.
Oh, no, it's definitely.
For a lifetime, so.
So can we write a letter from the council?
Yeah, I would do that for the.
And I would, I would also get the council on disabilities to sign onto it.
And our state delegation will also go, but I just wanted probably the board to vote on that and let's put it in for the chair's signature and we'll draft it.
They fix the fence on Main Street and Greenwood while they're at it?
Yeah, I know.
We can throw that in separately.
Okay. I don't want to distract from the importance of the accessibility, but.
The Disability Commission has talked about this forever, and this is, Dan and Lois Benjamin have been talking about this for as long as I've known them. So I, I would love to just put in a proposal and have Jason and Cade and Donald help us.
Yep, perfect.
So motion to draft a letter to the MBTA.
I'll take your.
Yep, in support of.
In support of accessibility at both.
I see at both, let's go to both stations.
Second. Okay. Any discussion?
Just, the, the $50 million figure still just floors me. I, I mean, and while I don't want to ask that we spend a lot of time or money coming up with like a project plan or an estimate, but I, I would be curious to get even just like a back-of-the-envelope impression from our engineering department as to what they think this would take. I mean, I.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
I, I can't imagine that the number, I mean, $50 million, I mean, you can build like bridges for that and.
I'm supporting what was said.
And is there no way that we can't, we can't put any of our own structure there, right? That's MBTA. Like even if we did a stopgap.
It's, yeah, they, they, their stopgap is, you know, they have something folded out of it, whatever.
It's infuriating. Okay, thanks. Okay, so we have a motion and a second in favor of writing this letter in support of accessibility. Counselor McLean?
That would be a yes.
Great. Counselor Nebraska?
I.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Um, application, still trickling in these applications. Secondhand dealer license renewal for Wakefield Gold and Silver Exchange, located at 364 Main Street. A motion?
Yeah, these are on a different timeline. These ones expire May 1st, so that's why they come in a little bit different.
Okay, I take it back. They're actually ahead of time, so good for them.
Yeah, we get, we get, yeah.
Yay, okay.
I'll hit the so moved.
Great.
Seconded, wow, sorry about that.
Okay, getting a little slow, it's getting late. Okay, so moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Vice Chair Butt. Any discussion? Um, roll call vote, Counselor McLean.[1698.73]
Counsel McLean?
Thumbs up.
Ah, great. Counsel Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Santos?
Yes.
Counsel Danahue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Item 18, item 18, request for library to accept and, from the library rather, to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the library in the amount of $520 from various donors with thanks. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt, counseled by Counsel Santos. Any discussion? Vote, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counsel Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Santos?
Yes.
Counsel Danahue?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, item 19, announcements.
Just very, very briefly, this Thursday, there'll be a public forum about the Wakefield High School building project, 7 o'clock on Zoom. There's been a lot of progress in the last couple of weeks, so encourage everyone to tune into that.
Excellent. I'm going to talk really fast, but I just wanted to recognize that the Human Rights Commission did an International Women's Day panel, it was called Breaking the Bias. You can watch it on WCET or the Facebook group of the Human Rights Commission, and I just wanted, they had five panelists all sharing their immigrant or their family's immigrant stories, so thank you, Teresa, Cindy, Sarah, Teen, Stephanie, and Summer for sharing your stories.
And also thank you to Maureen for moderating and doing an exceptional job.
It was, it's always one of my favorite events, and hopefully next year we're back in person. Just a little reminder on my favorite topic ever, community garden plots. Put in your application by April 1st to get a pot, it's online, that would be great. And then, just a little thing to think about, Julie, is I want to again thank the Conservation Commission, ZBA, and Planning Board for coming here. Those three boards/ commissions don't have a liaison, because we decided not to give them a liaison this year. It might be worth just thinking about giving them a liaison, as we also have a new council member.
So Counsel McLean, any interest in being a liaison?
To what, to every board?
To probably ZBA, I mean, planning is an elected board, I don't feel like we need a liaison there, so.
I'd be happy to be the liaison of the ZBA.
Good idea, Counsel Butt. All right, we'll fill you in on the role of liaisons. Anything else?
Yeah, I guess I spoke to you, didn't I?
No, no, it's, it's.
And this is a matter for a future meeting, sorry, I was taking notes. So excited about that new company coming to Wakefield and what we did. Manufacturing companies, because I know they'll at least scare me a little bit, and the environmental rules. So I keep on thinking about a certain business in Wakefield that leaked downtown, that leaked chemicals out of their building. And so, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think I know the building.
Yeah, yeah. And so, holding up sorts of, all sorts of development downtown because of chemicals. And so, I just, I know they're going to follow rules, I know there's federal rules, but if there's ever a way of us just talking about manufacturing environmental rules that they should be following.
Yeah.
Because I just don't want those chemicals leaking out, leaching out, and I want to make sure that they're following all appropriate federal laws, they're not laws that we put on, but just something I thought about when they thought, when they talk about manufacturing things that we don't understand, what sort of chemicals are they, and, you know, what safety protocols will they be following as they bring this new business to town?
Well, and certainly they'll have to train our firefighters and everything.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I didn't even think about that, yeah.
Yep, they usually do that. Anybody else have announcements? Matter's not anticipated, next meeting, looks like we have to change the town meeting date. Steve, you want to explain?
Yeah, there are things going on at the schools, and I don't think we can have town meeting with the Yellow Brook Road running through the middle of the auditorium.
I personally advocated for being right in the middle of the Yellow Brook Road.
So, we'll probably be looking at, we'll bring a new date, it was after the agenda, probably May 16th. We're showing the, which is a Monday, we're showing the real fact that we need that second auditorium, so we need to get that high school built quickly, so.
Get right on that.
We'll bring that next week.
Yeah, so that'll come up.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else not anticipated? No? I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Counsel McLean?
Yes.